All right, let's go ahead and get started for our work session portion of our meeting today. Just as a reminder, we do have this work session piece and then we'll break for our closed session to deal with our regular personnel, student matters, legal matters, and then we will have our regular business meeting at seven today. Our plans for this work session is to continue our conversations around the educational planning work. Then we have a brief discussion for a policy that we kind of touched on with our advisory boards that we need to do some action on today just because of the way the current policy addresses dates. Then we'll have continuing discussion with our budget planning and follow that, we'll go into the closed session.
If we have time, we are prepared to discuss a little bit of the recommendations from the specialty programs task force.
Okay, well, why don't we do that as part of the educational planning conversation? So that might tie into some questions that we were just addressing prior to the meeting, so.
Mr. Coleman is at his I O T training.
So just to be clear, what Dr. Boone was saying, that we can also get an update on our specialty programs as well. So let's get started with the educational planning. You know, we left off at the last work session where we did some deep dive discussions of looking at high school boundaries and attendance zones and its relationship to the career in technical education, high school. Leaving that meeting, you know, the quest was for us to provide some additional direction to the administration. Dr. Boone and I, Dr. Bailey, there've been some emails going back and forth. They did prepare an updated set of recommendations for us to look at. But as I viewed them, it was like all the things that we had talked about from December. And so I know we had talked about trying to hone in our conversation, looking at the hybrid of two and three. So I asked them to go back and take another look so we wouldn't go back and do, repeat what we did at the last session. But since that time, they've done some additional review. So first, what I'd like to do is just kind of turn things over to Dr. Boone and allow her to bring us up to speed on where the administration is with all that we've talked about thus far. And then I want to share with the board some conversations that have been taking place related to the CTE, but also having some impact on the educational planning resulting from conversations with our partners at Greater Norfolk Corporation, conversations with the city manager and folks in the city. I kind of want to share that as well, because I think we need to talk about some of these things if we're going to make the key decisions in the timeframe that I know that the board wants us to make them in order to move forward. So I'll come back to that, so for now, just turn things over to Dr. Boone and allow her to take us from there.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a busy couple of weeks as we've focused on the types of questions and the types of information that the board is needing, you know, in terms of to make a strong recommendation to the community to get that input and to feel comfortable, you have the clarification around what's working to be accomplished. So beginning with the end in mind and our goal of being able to move some of this work forward in the fall, as well as what's the time that the board needs to accomplish its work, have the community conversations, and then be prepared for a vote. So we started mapping back from the second meeting in April and realized that we have a tight time schedule, but something that we can accomplish. But by pushing it closer to April, what we'd be effectively doing is shifting how we start the program in the fall. Still with the idea of opening the CTE, comprehensive CTE school, but not dealing with the boundary piece, to take action on the boundary piece in April that will be in place for the fall of nineteen, which will allow the board and administration time to, as Mr. Jordan was saying earlier, to vet the various questions and make sure we have the appropriate recommendations before you so that we're all comfortable in where we're headed. The community is very clear as to what we're thinking about and what those recommendations will be, and then we can go forward. So we've met any number of times in administration to map out what that would look like. And again, we are ready to initiate the comprehensive CTE school in the fall. The only shift would be any associated boundary changes for that would occur in the fall of nineteen. We still would do outreach across the district to inform and hopefully attract students in as a ninth grade class and to accomplish all of that, but the final boundary changes would be effective in the fall of nineteen. And we feel that that's a good approach to, for all the volume of work and the information that we need to deal with. And so that's what we would like to offer as a point to go forward.
So any questions about that before I add some additional things to the equation? So let me just talk through some things in a way I know how to do it, and that's just putting it out there on the table. So every time we have discussions about next steps with our CTE program and with our high schools, I either reach out to Tommy Johnson with Greater Norfolk or he'll reach out to me and we'll get together and just kind of, in my role, just trying to keep them engaged and informed and make sure that we don't lose a key partner. So I can't remember the exact date, but I had reached out to him after one of our recent meetings and just said, why don't we just get together and make sure we're in sync? And we did that. And during the conversation, you know, part of what has been, at least a couple of things, has kind of been hanging over all of this, as we know, is funding. You know, with the CTE school, it's always been about, one, working with the city for funding. Also, the role of the private sector, business community, and the philanthropic community in providing support. And then, as you know, there've been conversations from time to time about whether or not there would also be resources from the state that we may be able to address. So that's one piece. The other piece that has, that we've talked about, that's thrown a lot of our planning into question has been the focus on the St. Paul's area. So we know right now, in the, as the city is doing a review and beginning some plans, some new plans around the St. Paul's area, that within that area, which has three public housing communities, Todd Water, Gardens, Calvert Square, and Young Terrace, there are four thousand individuals within that area, and of that four thousand individual, twenty-two hundred children. And so those children, obviously, by and large, attend Norfolk Public Schools. They have significant enrollment at Todd Water, J Cox, P B Young at the elementary school level, and others, and Richard Bowling. They also impact Ruffner Middle School. And then as we've had conversations about the current enrollment at Booker T. Washington High School, right now, all of those communities feed into Booker T. Washington High School. And as we've discussed, we know that part of the reason that Booker T. Washington's enrollment has fluctuated over the last year or so has been as a result of the previous public housing redevelopment impact at Richard Bowling and, or Richard, at Bowling Park and, what's the other one? Bowling Park and Roberts, Roberts Park. That redevelopment, which also had a significant number of children who were moved as a result of that, had impact on the Booker T. Washington enrollment. So in my conversation initially with Mr. Johnson, you know, his view was, which I tend to share, is that we know the city has given a lot of priority and focus to the St. Paul's area. You know, recently, the city passed a resolution, has been some conversation around funding and support, and we know it has a significant impact on the city as a whole. So what, in my conversation with Mr. Johnson, we were trying to figure out what would be the impact in terms of prioritization as far as the work that we were doing with the CTE High School, the work that he's aware that we're doing with the educational planning, and what the city is doing in terms of all these huge opportunities for the city, but all of them having price tags associated with them. And so a couple of things that we talked about. One was looking at ways to have education and public education in public schools at the center of the work. You know, what impact can Norfolk Public Schools and our work and our partnerships with others bring to bear in that area? So two things emerged from that. One was looking at early childhood education that the thought, as we all talk about, is the impact of schools on a neighborhood as well as on the ability to be an anchor as we talk about Norfolk Public Schools being the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. So Mr. Johnson and others are involved with E3 Early Elevate Education that's been involved with the demonstration site and really work at the state level and across the Commonwealth on ensuring that there's high-quality early childhood education across the Commonwealth. So one conversation that emerged from that was, is there some way to leverage the work of that organization into the quadrant, this impact on our early education pathway? So in theory, you know, someone who has a child, whatever their starting point is, let's say it's one-year-old, being able to have a pathway through third grade, through middle school, through high school that takes advantage of the curriculum that they've developed with UVA and have these high standards that also align with the work of Norfolk Public Schools. So one conversation was around early childhood. The other discussion that came up was around the CTE school and develop a land in the city. So the question was, kind of proposed, well, what if the CTE school went to Booker T.? And of course, when he said that, you know, I kind of chuckled because we know that there's, we've had some conversations before about the possibility of the CTE school going to Booker T. But his idea, at least the conversation that we had, was twofold. That if the CTE school went to Booker T. Washington High School, would it also free up future development opportunities in the Lake Taylor footprint that would allow for the work that the city wants to do along the military highway corridor? Could we get a win-win where we would continue with the work of the CTE, still looking at how we would do our balancing as it relates to high school and impact on Lake Taylor? But out of that, would it present a possible opportunity between the eventual total location of the comprehensive CTE school at one site, which we know could free up land at the current Norfolk Technical Center site? And then whatever the board ends up recommending on the Lake Taylor footprint, where we know we currently have Lake Taylor High School and Lake Taylor, Lake Taylor Middle School, could that lead to, one, continue to have the excellent career in comprehensive technical school that we've been talking about? Potentially bring some new revenue to bear that, at least from my perspective, should be dedicated to schools that could support not only our work with the CTE, but also address some of the other needs that we know we have as a division? Have a significant impact on what happens in the St. Paul's area with not only having high-quality early childhood education, building upon what we already have, potentially having an impact on a new school or a new type of school in the St. Paul's area, whether that was leveraging existing sites such as Ruffner or whether or not it resulted in something new. Having the pathway at Booker T. Washington, which could lead to new construction or enhancement at Booker T., which we know we've looked at our facilities index and we know that that's a concern. And then also still tying Booker T. into the surrounding area with Norfolk State. And so in theory, really having this significant impact on our work as Norfolk Public Schools and on the city as a whole, but now beginning to see the integration of the success that the city has had over the years in the central business district now coming across the street into the St. Paul's area and really coming even eastward now towards Booker T. and tying into the work around Norfolk State and the Greater Broad Creek area. So obviously, that conversation prompted a lot of different questions and thoughts. You know, I said to Mr. Johnson at the time, I said, well, you know, one, I have my own personal views about St. Paul's quadrant, and I hold those strongly, but I think as, you know, wearing my school board hat, that if it's going to be something that's going to advance the goals of the board and fits with the big picture, you know, I would bring it to the board. And I said to him, and I'm definitely not going to get out ahead of the superintendent because we have asked her and her team to spend so much time and energy on many things that I'm not in a position to commit to anything. But I thought the conversation was a value conversation, valuable conversation. Since that time, we've had similar conversation with the mayor and the city manager. I don't know where they are today, but because we know this is going to have an impact on conversations that we are going to have anyway as relates to our operational budget as well as our capital needs. But we had enough of a conversation that they are aware of this possibility. So we know, in addition to what we will talk about today and what we have upcoming in the month of March, we have to deal with our budget and prioritizing, you know, things anyway, whether it deals with our capital needs or our overall needs. But I said, I did not think it was possible to not bring this to the board for us to have, at least to begin to process it. Because if it does, if it's indeed a great opportunity, and we believe it's a great opportunity, and we can leverage it to the benefit of the school system and the city as a whole, we're going to have to take some action. You know, we can't, to Ms. Doyle's credit, we can't continue to just push it down the line. We're going to have to make some decisions and be focused on those decisions and then drive deeply there. So knowing that we are moving towards some votes and that we are going to make some decisions, I didn't feel as appropriate to just allow this stuff to sit out there without bringing it to the board for input and thought so they could tie into whatever actions we may take over the next thirty days. So I mentioned that to Dr. Boone last night, because my hope was, was that enough of the background work would have been done, that we could talk about it today anyway. But my feeling is, if we don't have that conversation, it'll never happen.
Right.
And I don't want to lose, and I know none of us want to lose the momentum, the hard work. We don't want our partners to get, feel like nothing is ever going to occur. I know, you know, Dr. Gabriel can also speak to in our meetings with the mayor and the vice mayor and the manager. You know, CTE remains an important piece as well as all these conversations that we've been driving around, funding formula and base funding and asking for what we need and all those things. So I just thought it was important to just bring that out today and just do it publicly and for us to throw that into whatever conversations we may have as we move forward. Because if we do decide to go down that particular path, then as a board, we would have to give some direction to the administration in that regard. If we decide that we aren't going to go down that path, then we've already heard from Dr. Boone where they are. But if we're going to send the administration and the staff to spend even more time and effort on this work, I just felt like it was important to just put that out, open it on the table for input and discussion. So that's where I have it for right now. You know, Dr. Boone, if you have anything you'd like to add to it, if I have any questions, any comments? I just said, let's just take some time and just kind of feel your temperature on it so that we can figure out in our next steps what we can collectively as a governance team communicate and what we can then factor in as our budget, programmatic efforts and in the ongoing MPS redesign that we've talked about, you know, whatever impacts are there as well.
I think the only comment that I want to make that's relevant to any discussion of potential site location change is that it does not change what the core operational principles for those four pathways, the primary academies. None of that shifts in terms of the place. That's solid, that's the work that we've been doing for a number of years. It's the work that our business and philanthropic community have embraced. And so nothing shifts in that piece. You know, in terms of what would the work have to look like, we'd have to go back to the table on some of the boundary work. But the program work and how we launch a comprehensive CTE school doesn't shift. There's still that piece of what the ultimate facility would look like, that too would remain the same, whether it's Lake Taylor, whether it's Booker T. There's still a need for a facility that matches the vision and allows us to implement the vision in a way that it can be most effective. Often, we'll say, you know, the building doesn't drive the program, and it doesn't. This time, the building enhances the program for its greatest level of success. And so that's why the building is still a critical piece wherever it would be located.
Let me just add something to that before I go around that Dr. Boone touched on. You know, we were having the conversation around the cybersecurity program at Booker T. And I had referenced the importance that I thought Norfolk State University, because of their work in cybersecurity and proximity to Booker T., but also Old Dominion in terms of the collaboration that exists between Norfolk State and Old Dominion. You know, part of that, we know when we were looking at the Lake Taylor site, one of the advantages of the Lake Taylor site is just the land. You know, the ability to.
Access the highway.
Access the highway, if there's a new school, you know, is there a way to, you know, build the new school and have the existing school and all of that? And we know that the Booker T. Washington footprint is smaller land-wise. But part of the brainstorming, just brainstorming, was, you know, pulling in Norfolk State as a partner and looking to what extent there may be opportunities to utilize shared facilities in some of the work, whether that's, you know, obviously academic facilities, but also some of their athletic facilities as well. You know that the city tore down the old factory, cigar factory building that was leaning, that right now is, you know, is some vacant area. So there are some things, you know, far above us, but just in terms of the potential. You all know I sit on the Norfolk State University's Research Innovation Foundation. So the Marie McDemmon Center that's right at Park and Brambleton, it's all is blocked down from Booker T. So I don't know all logistics in terms of, you know, security and those types of things, but the possibility of this career in technical high school with collaboration with the community college and the four-year university and almost having this shared campus model is not that different than what the children would be exposed to as they moved into a, you know, college environment. But I wanted to put that out there as well because we know that there are some site limitations, but that again would be something that we would have to think through. But I think the potential for the collaboration, the access to the light rail, the proximity to downtown does have some advantages in that site comparable in some ways to what we were looking at as far as Lake Taylor. Dr. Gabriel?
So the Booker T. conversation regarding the location of the CTE High School is not new. We've discussed that when, it might have even happened before we came on the board, actually. Do you?
Dr. Robinson, Mike.
Study was done.
The study was done. The study determined that Lake Taylor was a better location because of the land use?
And that was when we were considering a regional.
Right.
CTE at the time.
Because of the highway and because of all the other factors. So Booker T. has been considered before. What has changed to make it rise to the level of changing the course that we were going in? What guarantee is there? That's what I'm concerned about. So if we change our course, what are the guarantees that are in place before we have the administration shift gears again?
So I think it's a great question. You know, in my conversation with Mr. Johnson, you know, I used to word stipulations. I say, you know, hey, I think it's a great idea, but in my experience, it's not unusual that great ideas will emerge and then school systems and even some neighborhoods will get told, well, we'll get to you later. You know, the promise is made and then will be, forgive me for being sensitive, but almost like with the commitment around the one-year commitment with Richard Bowen Elementary School. So we make a commitment, and then the next thing you know, we do our part.
Yeah.
And then it's a year and five years and later and we're still waiting. So, you know, in my view, I was kind of upfront, I said, well, my expectation is, is that if the board and the superintendent decide to go down this path, you know, I would expect that we're going to come back and say, there's some things we want to see, agree to, and sign in blood.
Yeah.
That there's going to be a commitment to some certain things because we've not seen promises made in the past always kept. So in terms of the stipulations, that was something that I did share. In terms of rising to the top, you know, even when the study was done, obviously, Lake Taylor ranked high for a variety of reasons. Booker T. wasn't too far behind. You may recall at one point that Tracy Richter wanted to bring forward with a recommendation, some of the early aid planning prior to Dr. Boone's arrival. You know, he wanted to bring forward a recommendation that we look at Booker T. as the site. So I don't want to necessarily describe it as rising to the top language, but the context of it is really being driven by St. Paul's area and the potential impact that if the city goes down a path that leads to a significant redevelopment of that quadrant, if we looked at, if we look at past experiences, if we look at Broad Creek, if we look at Ghent, if we look at Robin Hood Apartments, if we look at wherever we've had these significant redevelopment projects in the city, it has had significant impact on enrollment and.
Right.
Boundaries and everything else associated with schools. So we know right now that this is a direction that the city is working. We don't know what the final outcome is going to be, but it's clear that it is the priority of the city right now to do something in that quadrant. And as I mentioned, when you have twenty-two hundred children there and we're talking about, you know, relocation and movement, that is going to have an impact on at least four or five schools, all of which right now are in that Booker T. Washington feeder pattern. So if something like that is going to happen and it's going to have impact on enrollment patterns and, you know, where students may or may not be, then from my pers- then from our perspective at least, for us to be proactive in trying to be out in front of it and that we are, can be in a role of helping to drive the conversation and the outcome as relates to education versus having, you know, development occur and then we're scrambling trying to figure out what happens after we make all these decisions.
Yeah.
That's really what's driving the conversation at this point.
Yeah, I, I think that we've always tried to be proactive regarding the St. Paul's quadrant. And I think that the proximity of the Booker T. Washington campus, the proximity to Norfolk State, to ODU, to TCC is a good one. And I, I think that it could benefit the school, whatever the vision is going to be as far as the different pathways. So, but we'll see those stipulations.
Well, I mean, that would, Dr. Boone?
And I, I just wanted to piggyback to your original question, Dr. Gabriel. You said, what makes it different now? And I think it is the, the St. Paul's quadrant. And we know how that, how things, major efforts like that and everything else work. People invest in that which they are connected to and believe in and, and want to see happen. So, for me, that's the best faith that I have on this because whether it was Booker T. or whether it was Lake Taylor High School, we've still been in the conversations. The mayor talked about the Conference of CTE School last year in his State of the City address and all of that. So, at some point, they have to make the fiscal investment for this to happen for the city. Because it's not just happening for Norfolk Public Schools, it's happening for the city.
Right.
And so, you, you know, I think that's the power in having a public discussion about the Conference of CTE School at the board level and, and other levels because then there's that level of accountability that comes from outside of this room and for those in the community. If this is what you said we're going to do, this is what we want, then how do we support it?
Ms. Doyle?
I think if it can be a win-win for all of us, then I recommend that we go down this path and further evaluate it. And I think what we need to do is pull a group of folks together from city and here to say, what does the master business plan look like and what are the financials associated with the moving pieces on the table? And then I also think we need to consider putting together the governing board for the CTE High School sooner than later so that they can have a hand in this decision as well, regardless of where it goes and how we map it. Because I think they can help shape too. And I also agree that we want to get ahead of the St. Paul's and not be just catching the football in the end zone and then what do we do next? So, I'd rather not be waiting for the outcome, but be part of the solution. So, I think that's true. I think that's good. And then I think there's just some details we'll need to think about it because, you know, Tracy Richter said we can never really live in the city with just four high schools. So, how do we deal with capacity and?
We, we, I stand firm on that. That's, that's one of the things
Yeah, and that's
that I say with the team. And I know that there's that squeeze to put us into four.
Right.
We cannot squeeze into four unless this board and the city wants very large high schools.
Well, and that's
First of all, unless you're going to build a high school that accomplishes that. Because even the CTE School, we're looking at targeting somewhere twelve to fourteen hundred students.
Right.
And so, if you do the math around all of that, Maury is, exceeds, at or exceeds capacity, Granby at or exceeds capacity, and Norview High School, the same thing.
Yeah.
So, we can't accomplish it within four high schools. And so, that has to be one of those stipulations on the table. What do we do to take care of a, a solid fifth high school? Which for right now, wherever that is, whether it's the fifth high school is Booker T., the fifth high school is, is Lake Taylor, whatever it is, that still has to be there because our data show very clearly that we are a five-high-school community, not a four.
Yeah, so we just have to be mindful of the compression by all means. And then what does that mean for Lake Taylor Middle? I'm just kind of saying the out-louds that we just don't know yet today. I think this could bring us closer to the city with some joint planning. And this would help bridge, I think, the relationship in the trust. And I think that we can't do this without looking at greater stipulations on capital improvements like Maury High School too. So, let's say we move forward and do BTW, CTE, and we do a third, a third, a third. So, philanthropy, city, and state. And we come up with the, I'm making it up, the ninety million to at some point in the near future build a, a school, not a hospital, a school.
Well, we could combine it with a hospital.
Well, we could. That would be great.
A school-based health center, yeah.
To develop the, the physical plant that would house the programming, which we know that you don't need that necessarily to have. I get that. And then we've got to take into account sea level rise and how we address that by all means with Booker T. Washington being where it is. And then Maury. So, how do we look at construction, not just, I think we have a few pieces of the puzzle that we need to throw in here as well, aside from just the maintenance capital, right?
And, and let me throw one other in. People grasp the cap, capital because you can see it, you know, when bricks and mortar are out there, folks see, feel like they see their investment. There will be costs associated with standing up a Conference of CTE School and the operational aspect. You know, you talk about the governance structure and absolutely, that's a place again where, where we talk about what's the philanthropic foundational support that will help with that infrastructure going forward and allow us to maintain equipment and supplies and all that so we don't ever get behind the curve on that. But there are going to be associated operating costs
Sure.
for the school, whether, regardless of the location, and those are some dollars that we've got to talk about going forward because we've got to do some equipment and program upgrades as part of this work. There are certain things that we're going to need and it can't be an either-or situation. It can't be we invest in the building. Well, we're the same funding source. We've got to have the, the money to operate.
And that's where I think it comes back to the city determining what's the business opportunity of a Lake Taylor property. So, what's the N there, right? So, that's where I think together, planning with them will help us understand how we can achieve successfully both parties' interests that ultimately help the full community on so many levels and really bring Norfolk forward with career and technical education while adding additional revenue stream through economic development in a corridor that we know is very viable. So, I think, I like the direction. I really do. I know there are a lot of moving parts. But I think I see lots of opportunities where ultimately the children win, to be perfectly honest, because I think they're going to great, further their opportunities for great education while working with the city for the end goal that we all have in mind too.
So, I'm going to come to Ms. Bassin, but you all know in my relaxed environment, I'm pretty comfortable in saying what I feel. So, one of the other things that, that I shared in my conversation, kind of piggybacking on something you said, Ms. Doyle, is, and I said to Mr. Johnson, I also thought that if we could make this a win-win, and this kind of ties to Maury Booker T. And it also ties to, you know, Norfolk's ongoing battle of the West Side, East Side thing. And I said to him that if the business community and the school community and the city and the citizens could wrap arms around this, it may finally be an opportunity for the East Side of the city that, in my view, rightfully so, feels is often neglected or gets the promises. That this would be the opportunity now to have, to declare victory in what has happened in the central business district, what has happened elsewhere, and really begin to tie the fate of Maury and Booker T. together. Kind of what you said, so that, because I said to him that, and to others, that if we have a scenario where Booker T. and Lake Taylor continue to lag and as part of our, we know what our safety needs are at, at Maury, that if we end up creating new things in one part of the city and the other part of the city continues to go down a path where it feels that it's getting secondhand stuff, we're never going to close the divide. I don't care what we do in St. Paul's. So, maybe this opportunity presents an opportunity to put to bed some old ghosts and really focus for the next forty, fifty years on this new Norfolk, this cornerstone of a probably diverse community that we talk about. And, and have that twofer, that win-win, where the benefits and growth and opportunity are now shared in lines that we once considered as divides or no longer considered as divides because we now have this synergistic pathway going forward. But as you mentioned, that, that popped back into my head because I think that is an opportunity this presents. If we can figure it out right within all the confines and stipulations that we've talked about. But I think there is a bigger picture here
Yeah.
that works for, not only for the children, but I think works for the city as a whole if we're willing to have those courageous conversations about it.
And just one more comment. I don't think any of this precludes us moving forward with the CTE at Lake Taylor next year. It's all programming, right? It's not about a building anyway.
Right, and
So, we can continue as a board to move forward on CTE because I tell you, I want to put the gas pedal on that like we all do.
Well, we can, if the board embraces Booker T. as, as, as the option, we can then start that for Booker T. in the fall, just as we were planning for Lake Taylor. We're juggling a couple of things. One deals with the, the direction of the board and a great direction in terms of the STEAM approach at Booker T. So, we're working feverishly for that. We're looking at what a, what a course and programmatic changes at Lake Taylor High School. So, we need to not just say we're going to start at one place. We need to start where it will be.
Okay.
So that we can go ahead and make those internal shifts around courses and everything else and then shift our attention to, you know, what it takes for the CTE, if it's going to be a Booker T. Then what do we have to do to strengthen the specialty program and other opportunities at Lake Taylor High School shifts? And then, of course, the, the attendance boundary work so that, again, we, we have time to, to take action on that between now and the, by the end of April.
Yeah.
Such that everybody will know what that looks like going forward in the fall. They would have had input a year before that boundary comes into play. And it may also help with some of our recruitment because if folks know, okay, well, this is going to be the work anyway. This is going to be the place. Let me go ahead and, and sign up for that now. And I'll be in place. We wouldn't want to start at one school, then shift students to another school. We need to commit to where it's going to be.
So, I think just lastly, I do think the governing board coming together on the CTE is just critical because I think
Which we, which we had on our agenda anyway.
I know.
No matter what, we were going to do that.
But I think that will help bridge the business community, the city, and ourselves and kind of like be the gravity that pulls everybody together as they all look at the St. Paul's quadrant and everything else.
And the other, the other piece of that, that we've talked about and I mentioned earlier is with the early childhood work that's been led by, you know, early elevated education, their work has strong support
Yeah.
both at the state and in the philanthropic community.
Yes.
So, the, you know, looking at this continuum, if you will, this lifelong learning continuum also can potentially bring other supports to the table that in cycles may not, may not be there. So, Ms. Bassin, did you have something you wanted to?
Well, I think you both covered several of thought, several of the thoughts, including, you know, I was going to press for having that governing board established as soon as possible. But additionally, making sure, and I know this is a no-brainer, but just to say to involve as part of that governing board is the community that's directly going to be involved, you know, from across the city because that's ultimately, I think, who we're going to attract the more we involve families and community members. I'm, I personally am excited about the thought because I remember years ago being a part of that committee and, and having that conversation and its connection to, you know, the hospital, the healthcare industry and other industries, the proximity of it is, is just makes sense. So, I, I would support, support that.
So, Dr. Robinson, you've been around longer than all of us and probably have dealt with several iterations of this. Any, any, any thoughts you have at this time or you want to?
I'm sick to my stomach.
What's that?
I'm sick to my stomach right now. In that, in two thousand twelve, I sat in my first school board, Norfolk Public School Board meeting and Tommy Johnson and, and
Mary Bishop?
No, the gentleman that was the publisher for the
Oh, Maurice Jones.
Maurice Jones was presented and I was so excited about this and here we are seven years later and my, my, my initial reaction is, is that this can's getting kicked down the road again. And I'm comforted to know that Dr. Boone feels that we can move forward with the programming at Booker T. if we chose to do that. I go back to the study that was performed a year or two into the process and the, the site, the Booker T. site was, had limitations because of the size. And I know you mentioned that and that was a prime consideration for having it at Lake Taylor. I would just be very disappointed if we didn't move forward on this. I, I can, I can see the, the potential benefits, especially with the changing environment in, in the St. Paul's quadrant and how the student population demographics is changing. But it still doesn't make up for the site at, at Lake Taylor, so. It's the will of the board, you know?
Well, yeah, and again, there's, you know, as I, as I say, when I opened up, I was kind of floored by it coming up because we've had our own discussions around, around that. And the, the spirit of the conversation was not to kick it down the road. It was to move or let it go. Because I think just as you, as, and I hear in your comments, not only frustration but fatigue. I think others are fatigued by it. And, and so, at some point, we're either going to execute and seize it or, or not. We know we were already moving down the path in terms of the programmatic piece of it. But, you know, you deal with some things during a recession time period. Economic conditions change, opportunities change. And so, part of it is indeed being driven by the economic opportunity in the St. Paul's area and also the economic opportunities along the military highway corridor. And so, that was the potential bang to bring new revenues into the city. But in my idea of a stipulation, you know, you know, working to earmark it towards schools. But in any event, I, I thought it was important to just bring that forward and to have that conversation publicly and I, you know, let Mr. Johnson know that I was going to bring this forward publicly. And, you know, his feedback to me was, by all means, do it. So, I can't speak for him. I can't speak for our business partners. But I can share with you what my conversations have been and what I've heard and wanted you to be aware of it and apprised of it. We've talked about being open and transparent and, and I wanted to make sure that, that we were sticking to that perspective. At least I was. And, and just having a sense of where we were because we knew we were going to have a discussion today. We know we're going to take some votes, including dealing with the governance for that board and for specialty programs and all these things that we've been working on for the last several years. But as Dr. Boone said to me when I first bounced it off of her was, you know, you all have to let my team know what you want to do and, and then give us the supports that we need to, to get the work done. Otherwise, let's, free us up time-wise, and this is not a direct quote, but free us up to then work on what we know we're going to do versus spending a lot of time working on something that we don't know if we're going to do it.
So, did you say that the mayor and city manager were aware of this as well?
Yes, there, there have been conversations with them as well.
So, would the next step be for you, Dr. Boone, Mr. Johnson, city manager, mayor, city folks to get together and say, okay, these are the pieces of the puzzle? This is how we map the business plan out and the economics of it. And alongside do the governance board development.
That could be a next step. It sounds like a logical next step, but for me right now, I think the the immediate step is kind of consensus on where we are. And having Dr. Boone ask us anything that she feels she needs to ask of us so that she's clear, both in terms of any future conversation, any conversation we may have along the business plan line, but also any immediate impact on the work that that we know needs to be done today. And frankly, would also have, as she mentioned earlier, have impact on the types of budget conversation that we're going to have over the next few weeks. So I'm I'm not avoiding an answer, but I just want to say it really has to be driven by some consensus around this board. And and being able to give a clear message, even if it's even if it's among two different paths. But some clear message and direction on how we feel and and how the superintendent feels about how we feel. So, you know, I don't know I don't know how to answer it beyond that at this point, but Ms. Bessine.
So as I as you talk about fatigue and next steps is the Ed Planning Task Force and communication with them as far as updates, which was a question I had actually before hearing about all of this is, you know, where where we are in the process of updating them about the progress that's happening, the communication, because that's some of the feedback, you know, I've had people ask ask me about that. So I think going forward as a next step, is that something before we even take it with this, you know, have the conversation with the city is to bring the task force back together and, you know, make them aware as we, you know.
We've been working with Tracy. We're actually vetting several dates to to bring the task force back for the other work that has to go on relative to the two actions around Camp Allen Sewell's Point and whatever would happen with Fairlon, Papa Halls and Lake Taylor Middle. And the other work that the board has charged us to to begin to review. So we've been vetting some dates and we'll have those soon. I think when it comes to this, I I do agree that there's a way to inform the task force and we could do that perhaps through an email before we even have a meeting. I think the challenge of scheduling the meeting, making sure Tracy's here would put too much space in the time of what we need to do. But I think we would still be respectful of that group because even when we started that task force, Lake Taylor High School was the selected area. That was the place we were working from. So that wasn't anything that they were debating. They were helping us look at how we address the boundaries related to that.
Right.
If the location changes, then we will be asking them to, again, they aren't making a recommendation around where the CTE high school would be, but helping us vet those boundaries. And we could certainly bring them back together so that we can get options and optional options before the board so that we can have public conversation and then move toward a vote. So I, you know, I think it's perfectly, I I agree with you that we should, you know, inform them of where we are in this work. And because obviously, you know, later today, hopefully, the board will take a affirmative vote as it relates to the St. Helena Boundary Pathway for middle and and high school. So that's part of the work that that group has brought forward and so we will update on all of that.
So in terms of, you know, where we are time wise, you know, we still have other aspects of the Ed Planning update and a couple of other agenda items before we get to our four o'clock session. But I get a sense that at least there's some comfort level with further exploration.
Yes.
And then maybe Dr. Boone is, maybe we can allow you to come and and let's talk through especially in other updates that we have. And before we close out, just come back and see if there are any questions of clarity you need from us as a result of the other things that we talk about. So it may give us some time to kind of work and marinate at the same time. But definitely not leaving here tonight, whether it's at the work session or at the business meeting, being able to give some some feedback.
So my.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Gabriel.
So when we are speaking about the St. Paul's quadrant and we're discussing the students that could have the impact of being displaced, are we still incorporating them within the St. Paul's quadrant footprint? Are we still saying that, yes, we will have Tide Water Park? Yes, we will have these schools or or all those things? Those are all those are all going to be part of the discussion as to what that landscape is going to be?
I think to Ms. Doyle's question about what some comments of the city around what's the business model? What's the the expected outcome and goals? You know, council recently took the affirmative vote to move forward toward planning for the St. Paul's quadrant transformation. And so part of that work, as they indicated, would be the Housing Authority making an application to begin demolition to build this into their annual plan. So that's a process that may take a year or so. And that's what I was saying at the joint meeting back in November with with council was that we still don't have true target dates of when we could expect moving to begin to occur in those three communities. We do know and we keep hearing that NRHA will continue to backfill any vacant units. All I'm doing is reporting the news. I try not to make it. And and so if that's the case, we are we are not certain as to what that looks like. So that's what I was saying to to council when that question came up and to the board, that we certainly have some ideas as it relates to some work that we've been doing and thinking about what population, what roughener could serve to do. But until we begin to experience some significant, until we have either target firm target dates of when things will be coming down and moves would occur and until we begin to experience some of that enrollment loss and to monitor where students are moving if they shift within the city. Yes, so so we are continuing with Tide Water, PB Young, Roughener in that because yeah, those students are being served. They are being served in their neighborhood schools. So we are certainly anticipating is one of the things that the district leadership team continues to talk about. How do we play anticipate and plan for the future? In our joint staff meetings with the city, this has been an agenda item for the last several meetings. And that's one of the things I was sharing with them. Again, you have to understand boundaries don't shift because a decision is made today. Boundary changes have to be planned for, so that's why we need to know in advance. Now, we've been offered space at the table, seats at the table in the various groups that will be doing the work with the St. Paul's group. And so administratively, I will be appointing different folks to serve on the various groups so that we're there, we're hearing it firsthand and we can use that to inform both to inform, be part of the conversation at the table to help inform the city and and be part of that and then to inform our work. So but right now, there's no shifting of any school in the St. Paul's quadrant.
And just also, we've have we're working on having a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority in April. So that's that's also under under development as well.
So the decision that's going to be before us that we have to move on is going to be whether the board has consensus around moving the location of what the CTE high school would be from Lake Taylor to Booker T. Washington. And then all the moving parts that are associated with it will be in development as we come to the table and work together on the next steps.
Yes.
That that's.
Kind of where we're headed.
And we need to do that today.
Well.
Just a general nod.
We just need to know the direction.
Yeah.
Do do we put the brakes on the boundary work that we were doing when with Lake Taylor High School being the CTE and the work that we were doing on the STEAM focus for Booker T. And pivot to what it will take to to stand up the CTE at Booker T. And to pivot to do work of how we strengthen the infrastructure and the specialty and other support systems for Lake Taylor High School.
Right, as well as looking at the bigger picture of the St. Paul's quadrant with the city.
Right, right, but that's in terms of Dr. Gabriel's question. I I see there there are two issues. There's one piece that we have to deal with immediately as an administration in order to be ready for that April date and in the mind and readiness and the marketing and everything we need to do. The big picture work is the frame by which we do this work and will continue to do the work all along. So we're vetting that in relation to the big picture and some of that, absolutely.
I just want to, I just want us to be able to give Dr. Boone directions so that her team can work completely on what the next steps are going to be.
Yeah, I just.
And that's why, you know, that's why I was saying a moment ago.
Today.
Yeah, but we're saying the same thing. But even like last week, I know it takes some time to focus on it. So we have at least another, you know, four or five hours together. But I also think that the update on the specialty programming and the other work also has context of that. So I'm just recommending for right now, let's let's continue with our agenda. But whether it's before we leave the work session or it's before we leave the business meeting tonight, we will we will we will come back to that. So with that, Dr. Boone, you had mentioned specialty programs and STEAM or anything else that you like to?
Yeah, I was looking to see, I know Mr. Coleman was with the secondary schools for the ILT work and I see Dr. Rogers. So we we've put together just a couple of slides to talk about what we're seeing as some of the big picture.
Thank you.
Recommendations and actions as it relates to the specialty program work following up from the mini retreat where we shared the work that had been underway with that group. And the commitment to to let you see what some of those recommendations are beginning to look like. This is not an all encompassing, all comprehensive list, but we wanted to lift a couple of big ideas to you to share. So, Mr. Coleman.
Lots discussed already today. My focus here is really.
He has a buzz in his head. You see his face and you just sent him in a different direction all of a sudden today, so.
Well, I'm I'm going to stay in the same direction until I'm told otherwise.
There you go. Good, good job.
And so, you know, at this point, you know, the Specialty Program Committee has has, as you heard from the retreat, has met several times. Since Mr. Jordan presented the the idea about the STEAM program, we have now had one other meeting where we've had a chance to to discuss that. And so that I'll I'll kind of hit on some of those pieces, you know, as as I do the narrative component. But what I've done here is is kind of bulleted some of the items, you know, that we've talked. It's certainly not inclusive of everything we've talked about. In fact, I could have probably added another, you know, seven to 10 pages. We've talked about a lot in a lot of different contexts. You saw from the retreat, you know, we had six different subcommittees. So some of the subcommittees talked about the same things, but from different perspectives. And so I'm I'm just going to briefly start with what I have here. And the the first piece, you know, when you look at the columns, it's what we know.
Click your screen. Got your clicker?
Oh, excuse me. What we know, what our committee's overall general recommendation is. And I can say that, you know, when you have approximately 30 people on a committee, you don't always get 100% consensus. But we do have majority consensus. And then what some of those next steps are. And in this particular case, for, you know, what I'm presenting, I also want to make, you know, clear that we still have not had the opportunity to bring it to the full DLT for DLT discussion as well. And so to begin, Booker T. Washington recommendations in terms of some of the things that we we've discussed. It does not have a unique a unique program in place at this time. We have an academy, you know, we have the performing arts. We do have, you know, a a good history of many successful things that occurred at one time with the performing arts. But right now, the program really has has fallen and it's fallen because of a number of things. Primarily student enrollment and student enrollment, you know, influences staffing allocation. Staffing allocation then limits what your program offerings can be to a certain extent. And you've got to to make choices and sometimes those choices are tough based on what the student needs are within that building. At the same time, the facilities itself, you know, has has deteriorated as well. There has been work that's gone into Booker T. to support the performing arts, but really it's gone in to perform to support the arts in general. You know, when you compare it to the other five high schools, it really isn't even at the same level as the other five high schools in terms of some facilities, in terms of some offerings. And so what our recommendation is, is to continue to upgrade the arts infrastructure program. That's everything from lighting to soundboards, to classrooms, to cabinets, to general equipment that is needed to support the arts program. They're functioning fine, you know, they can get by. But if we really want to enhance an arts or STEAM program at Booker T. Washington, it's going to have to take an infusion of or an investment of some kind, you know, to make that happen. I'll be honest, you know, right now, and Dr. Boone may not want me to say this, but, you know, we had we had a a program, you know, from the outside community come in to use the facility just recently. They had to bring in their own lights because we were having to use emergency lights, you know, in the auditorium. And so that's for an outside program. Then you look at it for what we're having to do for our students. We have a disconnect there. When you go to the next bullet, the number of course offerings in the arts is similar to the other high schools. There really isn't a lot of differentiation there. We do have some unique courses and that primarily is in the area of dance. But when you look at some of the other course offerings, you know, we're actually at a disadvantage because of the numbers. Most of the other high schools have a boys' course. They have a girls' course. Booker T. doesn't have the numbers to support those separate groups. So they do have a differentiated class in that they have a mixed course and it's a very strong mixed course. They do very, very well. But because of the numbers coming in, we can't differentiate, you know, those those pieces. We have a beginning band at Booker T. Washington, which is good to have. But, you know, it also is is something that, you know, if we had a stronger feeder program, and I'm going to hit that one a little bit later, you know, we would be able to have stronger numbers there as well. So course offerings is, you know, one of those, you know, areas that we need to look at as well. Especially if you really wanted to have a STEAM program, you have to have something that differentiates it from the other locations so that it will draw students in for that specialty program. What we discussed as a committee in regard to the STEAM component would be referring what we refer to as Arts Plus. And that's really strengthening the arts program, but bringing in those STEM pieces, you know, into the arts program at the same time. And by that, you know, some examples, you know, that I'm referring to would be like the tech theater piece, you know, side. Being able to do more on set design, being able to do more, you know, with with sound and with mixing and, you know, modernize basically the the program, you know, that it could exist there. We'd be looking to do some things, you know, with fine arts in terms of digital media, doing some things with topography and creating a sequence along those lines that would support that STEM piece as well. And even with, you know, dance, we could do more with dance in conjunction with integrating with physical education or other content areas. So there is a way to really bring in, you know, those STEM pieces as well. Lighting design, I mean, you you could go on. There's any number of different ways to bring those STEM components in. And so, you know, that would be, you know, the the committee's recommendation based on just the brief opportunity that we've had at at this point. There are other ways, you know, that we could go and other STEM components that could be brought in. But really, you can almost look at it from the standpoint of taking the arts and embedding the arts out into the the STEM fields and not STEM being supported by the arts. It really can go, you know, in conjunction that way. Going to the next bullet, Booker T. Washington does not have the staff to fully implement and support an arts specialty program. That goes back again to that allocation, which is based on student enrollment numbers. If we want to bring new students in for these special programs, we're going to have to make the commitment to hire the staff that will be able to offer those differentiated classes or support programs that will then draw the students in. Absent those components, student, you you have very little to be able to market. you, you have very little to be able to market. You know, what do you tell students, you know, when you, you don't have the staffing or those components in place? So, you almost have to make that investment upfront, absent the enrollment piece, to be able to draw, you know, those, those folks in. And that's also gonna take an investment.
Building the program. That's building the program.
That's building a program. Exactly right. That last bullet on that page then is Booker T. Washington does not have a pro, a program leadership position to support the building, community partnerships, secure grants, or, I mean, the, the whole nine yards. We have that for three of our programs, and those are our three healthiest programs. You know, so, you know, it makes sense that if you've got somebody committed to that program leadership who has the time within their school day to reach out and build those partnerships, and quite frankly, Norfolk is very rich in the arts. We have the opportunities here, but we don't have the ability or the time or the person to go out and do that work. And so, you know, one of our recommendations is for the, the division to be able to create, you know, that leadership position at the school level. If you go to your next page, what we know is that B T W lacks a strong feeder program to support the arts in general. This goes back in years, and it, and it does tie back to, you know, standard-based accountability and testing and where, where you prioritize your time. But I believe Dr. Boone has made it clear, we've got to kind of get back to rebalancing, that if you do all of the things you're supposed to do with instruction on a day-to-day basis across the board, testing usually should take care of itself. We have really done ourselves, you know, a disservice in some locations in regard to sacrificing maybe some art sections to be able to double block, you know, math or double block English. And while that's important too, and I can go back to, you know, previous board meetings years ago with Dr. Stewart and time, you know, time management, you really have to prioritize that time. Well, you also have to balance that time. And so, we're in progress right now of revisiting, you know, our, our master schedules. We've actually been doing that last year. And coming back and making sure that, you know, we create opportunities for students to have success in multiple areas, and they do lend themselves to the content and core areas as well. And so, that continues to be, you know, I believe, a, a division focus. Booker T. Washington needs upgraded modern equipment. I talked about the infrastructure already, but really, we also need to talk about that equipment that's needed for specially designed classes. You know, so if you're gonna have that theater class, you've gotta have the costumes that would go in and support to be able to do theater productions. If you're going to have that strong music program, you're going to have to have upgraded musical instruments and components that will be able to support the students who want to be in those programs. If you're going to have that, that fine arts piece with the digital media, you're gonna probably need that Mac lab, or you're gonna need a 3D printer. You're, you're gonna have to have pieces of equipment that would support the instruction that would draw the students in. Absent that, you know, it's, it's gonna be really tough to sell a program. So, those are just some of the recommendations for Booker T. Washington. I'll keep going unless you have specific Booker T. Washington questions.
I, I have one. Couple of questions. If we're going to, and, and you're right in terms of the, the numbers, and we, we won't get numbers if we don't have a program that's desirable. So, I'm still back to my initial question is, how do we market choice programs with that one school? Because if we do that and we present the other programs, who would choose a Booker T. where it is now over maybe a C T E or some of the other programs? That's number one. And number two, what are some timetables and benchmarks in terms of getting the program the strength that it needs to get up to speed?
Let, let me start with the first one a little bit, Mr. Coleman, then you can chime in. In terms of the marketing, we've continued to market the Booker T. program. As you recall from the mini-retreat, we did show while the number of applicants was a small, it was a small number, there were applicants who were interested in the arts program at Booker T. So, that has occurred this year even without these enhancements. Our goal in terms, as you think about what are the timelines and ultimately what will be the metrics, the metrics piece will be, again, are students selecting the arts? Are they being successful in it? What's the evidence of student performances, connections to higher ed, or performances and other things outside of high school? Those become those core metrics like we do with any of our other specialty programs. When you look at the, the last bullet and several other bullets, certain things say they're in progress on, on the two pages that Mr. Coleman provided. And the other piece to say, what are some budget implications? And we're now, that group is beginning to put together, what are some costs associated with courses we can start in the fall? And what does that full program of studies look like across all of the, the, the various arts disciplines? So, performing arts, visual arts, music and theater, what do they look like? What are the courses? And they've done some asset mapping, as I talked about before. What courses are in place? He described some of this in the first page of this. How do you strengthen the support for current course offerings and sequences? So, as we map out what it should look like, as we said, for a 21st century contemporary arts program, it's not just about the performance piece, but it's the technology connection to it that we see happening in the, in the arts world. That's how we're beginning to build in these courses and add to those. And that's where it gets to, you know, what are the costs associated with those, those opportunities? You're gonna see similar comments when we go to the specialty program slide overall. And so, our timeline is to begin this improvement process for the fall, as we said to the board back in January, you know, after this was presented. You know, we're, we're launching this just as we're doing with C T E. How do we go into building this as a very strong opportunity? Should Booker T. become the C T E site? This doesn't stop this work because there's still a, that'll be a uniqueness to our comprehensive C T E school that perhaps the one in Worcester I had, did not have. And so, there are ways in which we can continue this and will continue this going forward. So, our timeline is, what are the new courses we can put in place for the fall? And those students who have already applied will be beneficiaries of these enhancements as we start in the fall, and we'll continue to build that strength. But a lot of it is driven by, you know, what we're able to afford. And not only for Booker T., but for all of our specialty programs.
And I guess the thing that concerned me in terms of that is that you're saying that it's driven by enrollment. But if it's driven by an enrollment and, and, and the enrollment, and the program is not up to speed, I mean, what students, if I had, if I had to choose?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, when this came about, applications were, were just about ready to be posted. And so, we weren't gonna have anything ready for this year's applicant pool. But because we did have applicants and we had an opportunity, we have an opportunity for them to be the initial beneficiaries. And we will use and leverage their participation along with the students who are currently in the program to, to, to be the communicators about what the changes are, what this looks like, what are the new courses. It will, enrollment has been the challenge of why it hadn't been sustainable. And I, I would say the one piece that Mr. Coleman didn't mention around the enrollments, also, we had certain champions in the arts, those teachers who were doing it. And that was a big piece. When those folks retired or left, they, the, the same passion wasn't necessarily backfilled. Doesn't mean that we don't have great folks there, but they weren't part of that original vision for how do you generate this type of programming. And so, we're gonna use, just as we've done with the pilot program at Lake Taylor High School this year for the I T Academy. We've started with a small number of students. And we actually have more students, we'll have more students in the arts at Booker T. because there are already some students in, in, in the upper grades that will help us map out and build this. But what we're saying to you is, this is our commitment. And the only thing I own in life is my, is my word. So, in my integrity, this is what we're gonna do, and this is how we're gonna do it.
And actually, my interpretation of the recommendations is the opposite, that, not that these are firm recommendations, but based upon what's being discussed is actually standing up the program even in spite of the fact that enrollment is low, so that the program is enhanced, that will then drive the, the enrollment. So, it's, it's moving away from having the enrollment have the impact it has had in the past. It's asking us to consider the investments that are necessary to strengthen the program, recognizing that the enrollment will follow.
Right. And that's where I am, to strengthen the program and the enrollment will increase. Right, right. And that's why this, what this is, is really a report on some of the asset mapping we had done as it relates to what's in place at Booker T. What are the identified strengths and what are the identified gaps? And how do we propose filling those gaps?
Ms. Macine?
So, I, I have a.
I'm sorry.
Can I just add one piece?
Sure, yes, sorry.
And, and, and that, you know, when you talk about courses, we haven't been just, you know, sitting on our hands waiting for something to happen. You know, we did a lot with marketing from last year coming into this school year, and we did increase the number of students in the performing arts program. At the same time, on the curriculum side, you know, Giorgiana Fello and Daniel Robie have both, both been working very hard, along with Dr. Cataldo, in terms of identifying potential options. And so, we are looking for this next school year. I mean, student registration has just started. We want to be able to offer a Digital Media One class. We want to be able to offer A P History because we knew, we know we have a small cohort of, of, of students who would want to take those courses. The challenge there is, one, we have to send the teacher for training this summer to be able to teach the A P, you know, history. So, that's.
Art history.
That's what I figured she was saying.
I mean, the art history, I'm sorry.
If they had A P history.
The A P part, history.
Right.
Thank you. And so, we've gotta send that teacher for professional development. At the same time, the digital media course, we've got about half of the lab, you know, put together. You know, we still have to finish the other half of the lab, you know, from a financial standpoint and from just a facility standpoint to make that happen. We feel confident we can make that happen. And so, we are moving in those directions, whether it's gonna support a performing arts, you know, program, or whether it's just part of the general, you know, infrastructure. We already have in our division a Digital Media One course. You know, it's at A D L as part of the project learning, or the, yeah, the.
Project-based, project-based.
Project-based learning.
Component. And they earn, those students earn credit-bearing, you know, credit for that. So, we have to make sure that we are able to provide that continued sequence as well. And so, I'm gonna speak to that a little bit later in terms of sequence and, and making sure we're not doing things in isolation. But we do, you know, have opportunities at Booker T., both from supports of the infrastructure, but also from a curriculum standpoint as well. We do wanna make things happen, you know, and we, we do it based primarily on the, the funding support and what we can make happen. Okay?
Ms. Macine, Reverend Haywood, Dr. Robertson.
So, you, you just touched on a couple of things, but what, I have a couple of questions and comments. So, first, the recommendate, or the, what, what was found out about not being fully staffed, and then the recommendations around the staffing. Can you give some background as to what some of the challenges were in fully staffing the program? And how do we, what are we putting in place to ensure that?
When you talk about fully staffing a, a, a program, you know, when schools get their staffing allocation, it's based on their enrollment numbers. And so, what principals and schools have to do is they have to look at those enrollment numbers. They have to look at student registration for the courses that are either required or electives and what they need. And then, decisions have to be made in terms of what we can support. And so, cuts may have had to have been made, you know, in, not only in content areas, but in elective areas to be able to accommodate the students they have and those necessary requirements. When you start having low program numbers, you know, for a course, you may actually have to cut, you know, say, an A P course or honors-level course because the numbers just aren't there. At Booker T., you know, several years ago, what we had to do was even in, set the performing arts side apart, we've had to take some A P classes, and we've had to kind of pair them up and say, we're gonna offer them every other year so that we could make sure students still had access to those courses because we didn't have the numbers to be able to support both courses in the same year, year after year after year. And so, you have to make some of those kinds of decisions when it comes to the staffing.
Right. And, and I guess that, that wasn't my, I guess I didn't state that question correctly. But I mean, specific for the performing arts.
Okay.
So, so now the recommendation is to have a full-time dance, you know, full-time theater, you know, what you have listed here. I guess my question is how, so these are the positions that have been cut previously. Is that correct?
Not necessarily have been cut previously.
Okay.
They may be positions that they never even had.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was trying to.
What I'm saying is, those are positions that would be needed to be able to support a STEAM, you know, focused-type program.
Right, okay.
Because you're now adding in, you know, those other components that support the arts and the arts support the STEAM, or the STEM, you know, in terms of, you know, those other courses.
Okay. So, and our suggestion going forward is that regardless of enrollment, that we fulfill these positions?
We're gonna make a reasonable recommendation.
Right.
Based on students that have applied and, and will possibly be accepted into the, to the arts program. And those who are there, we'll build a program of studies based on some of those students. So, not everything will show up in the same year.
Okay.
Just as, again, as we talked about the C T E program, and there are some things that will, that, that will follow. But we will begin trying to support this, looking closely, are there staff on, on board currently who can support some of the additional classes? Therefore, we shift how they teach and shift what they teach so that we don't necessarily have to bring new staff in. They'll have to be back, someone will have to backfill to do some of the other general music things that would still be offered. But so, that's how we're looking at it. What are the shifts that we can do? What will be new for next year, recommended new for next year?
And do you envision, or does this, does the task force envision there being a pathway, you know, 'cause for, you know, gifted in visual and performing arts? So, I know that's something that we don't have here, but I know other districts have that. And could this be a way where we are now incorporating that into the local gifted plan to, and this could be a potential?
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay, okay.
No, we were working on the Booker T. piece. Certainly, it's something we've considered.
But that's something to consider, right.
It has come up in discussion, but there's, there's no recommendation that has come from.
Okay, that's, all right. All right.
Reverend Haywood?
Yes, I have several observations and some comments based on what you've presented. So, what I, what I see as a possibility here is a school that can be so outstanding that it would rival any STEM program that we would offer here in the city. I think that, I think that it's important for us to not only look at what type of staffing we have at Booker T. And I would hope that the staff that you put there are gonna be strong, that you, you're not putting first-year teachers here, although there are those first-year teachers who are outstanding. But, 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 but we're, we're talking about people who, who are experienced and really understand the field. But also, the feeder patterns, I'm so glad that you looked at that because that really is going to make or break these programs. So, on the middle school level and in the elementary school levels, you know, I've been in, in some of our schools and looked at the music programs. Don't have enough instruments, they're poorly run programs. If these are gonna be, the feeder schools into Booker T. have to be strengthened, in particular in the middle school. And I would recommend that we consider placing resources in those middle schools that are feeding into Booker T. So, that students who are not able to get private lessons, for instance, not just in music, but also in the, and the other arts, are provided that in middle school. So, by the time they get to Booker T., they are prepared to, to train on a very high level. So, I think you're very.
We'll get any argument from the specialty program.
So, so, so I think you're very right in putting this, looking at the feeder patterns for this. I also am really glad to see that you understand that there needs to be a, a district program leader for Booker T. who would coordinate with outside sponsorship. For what I know of schools like this in other cities, like for instance, in Washington, D.C., the Duke Ellington School of Performing Arts, the reason why these schools are so strong is because they're able to partner with community assets and bring resources that are specific to. and bring resources that are specific to that school. So it's very important, and we've got that all around Booker T. We've never used those resources. And it's those resources that will cause the diversity of the school to be, um, strengthened and, um, maintained. I also would say that, um, and I, this didn't necessarily happen during, um, Dr. Boone's tenure here with us. You know, I've been in these schools and I've seen how the schools are, are blocking courses. So, you know, you, you see the students who would normally be in music can't get there because of how, and not only that, but, but-
We, we hit a passion point, didn't we?
We fixed that, we fixed that double blocking, Reverend Haywood.
And you know, as a board member, we brought this stuff out and said this and, you know, nobody listens, we're going below the line and stuff like that. But, yeah, this, 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 this is a real problem. And so I, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm, I'm really glad to see, uh, you doing this. And I, I would say to you, Dr. Boone, that the way that you have proceeded and, and, uh, and, and the journey to improve the academics of Norfolk Public Schools has been a steady, long-vision jog, which I think is the right thing to do. This is what needs to happen with this program. We, we don't need a flash in the pan kind of thing. We don't need the optics. We need a long-term view towards strengthening this and putting the kinds of resources in it so that this school would be a school that will have a waiting list of people who would want to get into it. And, um, so, you know, you, you, you've got a good start here. And, um, and I appreciate what you've presented.
And if the commitment is there, we can make that happen. So, um, I can't argue with anything you just said. So I'll just go ahead and move forward then if that's-
Dr. Robinson and Dr. Gabriel.
This question's for Dr., well, I guess, clarification. If we approve the, the STEAM program for performing arts and moving the CTE to Booker T., Washington, are you envisioning both being integrated together under a single roof?
What I would see is that the CTE brings that core STEM piece and we would continue to perpetuate the arts. Strengthen the arts as also a component. Because the, the vision that had been, it was around a comprehensive CTE school, that did not have that arts piece. We don't necessarily see that we have to abandon the arts in order to bring the CTE high school into this.
One of the four programs was STEM anyway.
I understand that. I'm just, the comprehensive school, technical education schools, when it's going to house 1,200 to 1,400 students. If we have a robust arts program, how many students are you looking to include in that?
Part of that, part of that 1,200 to 1,400.
Okay. And then the next question is, um, how much is it going to cost? And where's the money going to come from?
The cost, as I indicated earlier, we're now beginning to map out, you know, what we would need annually. Our funding comes from the city.
Okay. And the-
And state.
The last thing is a comment.
Partnerships.
And partnerships.
Yes.
But I, partnerships should be designed to enhance, not to plant.
Absolutely.
The, the last thing is, is a comment, and that is, if we are going to endeavor to do this, I agree with Reverend Haywood. This has the potential to be a tremendous program if we do it right. Aspirationally, we should look at, at, uh, just like we, we used the, um, CTE model in Worcester as, as the model for, for the CTE program that we want to develop. We should make it, uh, a, uh, our goal to make it like the, uh, LaGuardia High School of Music and Performing Arts in New York City.
I will, and I don't disagree, but I will remind you that we also have an asset that Norfolk Public Schools is part of, and that's the Governor's School for the Arts.
Right.
And so we do have, um, that piece too. So our goal with the arts, even originally with Booker T. having the specialty program in the early 2000s, early to mid 2000s, was never to be a substitute for the gifted school, but to be an enhancement for students who have that strong vision and passion for the arts and may not want the type of programming that we have at the Governor's School and those much longer days, you, you know, longer days come with any program, it, when you have that level. But may want to stay in their comprehensive high school rather than that, that dual opportunity. So we see this as another pathway for the arts and not becoming the substitute for the Governor's School. So we would stay true to our Governor's School commitment, but also build a stronger, uh, district-wide opportunity for the arts.
Dr. Gabriel?
So Dr. Robinson actually kind of hit on the question that I was going to have about, are we doing the two programs simultaneously? So what would that look like? Would it be the students apply to the CTE high school and they will be given the, the, the benefit of, of performing arts? Or is it going to be that they apply? And we might not have even thought of this, but as we're having this open discussion and-
Given us all, they're one month up-
I just, how, how is this going? I can see the ones fusing together, but-
Remember how new this Booker T. concept for the CTE, Conference of CTE High School is? I've been able to have one conversation with the senior team and, and Ms. Goshen to think about, if this was a direction, how could we make it happen? We aren't there where you are yet. But nothing precludes us of considering a, a, there, there are four academies within the Conference of CTE School that are designed around the STEM piece. I don't think there's anything that precludes us from having the fifth academy be in the arts.
Okay.
And so how we get there and all of that, we, we aren't there yet. But we did have one conversation around the feasibility of shifting locations if that became the desire of the board, and that's as far as we are.
Is, Dr. Boone, is your goal in this budget cycle to present, if the, if the board has consensus on moving Booker T., choosing Booker T. as the comprehensive CTE high school location, to put forth what is needed in the budget in order to bring that program, uh, program-wise there and do the items that, uh, is being, that are being presented here as far as the recommendations for the visual arts program?
We have been working on what would be the budget request for the CTE high school, regardless of location. So that's the budget we've been working on. That budget doesn't necessarily shift because we, as you recall, when Ms. Goshen did that very long, one-minute commercial and then followed up at the mini-retreat, there are things that will come into place. Remember, our heavy manufacturing labs are still at Norfolk Technical Center. So that doesn't change regardless of where the CTE high school is housed. The courses and those things that we would be bringing onboard are the same courses we would be bringing onboard. So we're developing what will be a budget request, um, around phasing into the full comps, comprehensive CTE high school. We will certainly, based on today's conversation, talk about what are the right budget requests to make uh, as it relates to the arts piece of strengthening that. Our, our needs, our vision, our desires far exceed what the city has been, been saying would be their commitment. And, uh, I wasn't going to go there today, but I am. You see here, you hear my team laughing. You know, at every joint meeting we've had with council, even when I was before council, talking about budget last year, the question is always, how are you going to expand or replicate certain specialty programs? All of the specialty programs in schools have cost above and beyond a school that is a comprehensive school without the added bells and whistles in programs. Those come with a cost. People in the community, uh, we're, we're all, I live in this community, all going to have to grasp that in order to strengthen those very, um, unique programs that are so desirable and to strengthen our core schools, we've got to have the funding that goes beyond the status of quality, which, uh, the city does go beyond standard of quality. But that's to get us where we are today. We cannot grow and expand our programs and offerings unless we get additional money. And that's beyond capital money. We must get additional operational funds to do these things that we've heard not only from council, but from students, from parents in the community at large. These are the things that we want in our 21st century educational organization. And so that has to be the conversation going forward. Unfortunately, we're still battling over the base. We're still engaged in that conversation around the base. And so we've got to move the conversation to, how do we do more of this? And it's not just the board that's asking for this. We've heard it in those joint meetings and out in the community.
With the feeder patterns, are you also looking at, um, elementary school music education?
Not at this time, not at this time. Time out, everybody. Let me try this one more again. We've had one, uh, team meeting as it relates to this. Our charge initially from the board was to begin, was to plan for and begin to initiate, not full implementation next year, school year, a STEAM focus for Booker T. Washington High School at the same time that we work to strengthen our existing specialty programs during that same asset mapping. What are our strengths? What's the vision and the mission of the school, of the program? What are our assets? What are our gaps? How do we recommend addressing those gaps? And that's what we're doing. We have focused on this high school piece first before we can get to middle and high, and elementary. We certainly acknowledge the, the, the questions and the comments around middle and elementary. But no, we aren't there today.
Yeah.
And we aren't there, and we won't be there in the next, we won't be there this school year. So let me go ahead and put that out. No need to ask us where we're going with eleme-, you can ask us, let me forgive me. No need to expect a response of, uh, uh, that we have moved the needle on elementary and middle as it relates to the next school year. Because right now, our focus is on how do we bring these programs to bear? And then we talk about what do we do to make sure they are sustainable.
But going back to Ms. Dwell's point earlier, and, and all of us, what we've talked about is, uh, in those joint conversations and in the conversations with the community, what we are talking about is something that people can rally around.
Sure, definitely.
Whether we're, you know, the whole, the whole pathway, the whole big picture. And, uh, you know, and so for those who may ask the question, well, you know, what's your plan and what's the outcome going to be? We, we are being very open in terms of if we want to have the type of, uh, competitive education and tying with the business community and all the things we've talked about. We've been doing that work and I think in this 30-day turnaround period is some pretty good stuff that they are, are showing us right now. Ms. Bassin, we're going to let Mr. Coleman finish, and we're going to get through the rest of our, our agenda.
All right. Not going to ask about elementary, middle school feeders.
What gifted?
I'm just, or, uh, yeah.
Okay. Now I'm just messing with you, Ms. Bassin. Cause that was the original question, was we would have a gifted pattern.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, um-
I'm listening.
So the recommendation about, you know, it's focused on dance and theater. So as we, you know, kind of put it together, the pieces of the arts as being part of the comprehensive career and technical, we've talked to, as, under the STEAM umbrella, about having, you know, journalism, and you talked about digital media and things like that. How did the, the task force come up with the recommendations that it, like, when I look at this, I see that dance and theater, the performing arts is the focus. But what about the other arts that, arts that are covered under the career and technical curriculum?
Well, it kind of goes back to what Dr. Boone said, strengthening what we already have.
Right.
And so we already have the dance, we already have the theater, you know, pieces. Let's enhance those as we build out those other components. You know, the digital media is something that we're trying to build out. There's other components that we would like to potentially build out. But quite frankly, we have to, you know, really have more discussion around the curriculum instruction side in terms of what those courses and course sequences would be. So that's going to take a little bit more time in terms of, you know, developing that structure.
Okay, all right.
All right, anyone else on this piece? All right, if you can walk us through the rest of it.
Going to your next page then. You know, as I said earlier, we really, as a task force, have tried to take a critical look at all of our, our specialty programs. And so just a couple of examples of, of some things that we've looked at. One is the Blair Pre-Medical Health and Engineering Program does not offer a unique course offerings or experiences. We offer the high school credit-bearing courses, uh, at Blair, but we offer those same courses at all of our other middle school courses, uh, high, or schools. And so, again, if you're going to call it a specialty program, you have to have that piece that differentiates it. Well, what Blair does have is they have some experiences. They do some field trips, they bring in some guest speakers. And so that helps enhance that program, but we don't feel like that's enough. You know, we feel like we can do more from a curriculum standpoint where you're embedding that medical, that, that engineering into course instruction. And that, that did exist to a certain extent at one point. But again, through turnover of staff and then not having the consistent professional development that would support, you know, training new staff to be able to do those things is what we feel needs to be put in place. So the recommendation there would be to integrate more themed components into the course curriculum and to identify additional experiences. Because we, we kind of identified, we're missing out on some pieces. You know, we have a strong, uh, program at NTC that does have some medical components, that does have some engineering components. But we haven't really linked the two. And so we could bring students over, we could bring staff over. So we're looking to enhance, uh, to do some of those things. So, you know, in terms of next steps, professional development and linking with those entities that already exist. And those wouldn't necessarily be, you know, the professional development would be monetary, but linking with those other, you know, groups would not. So that's something that we will move forward with. When you look at, uh, the Academy of International Studies, they've also had some key turnover, turnover in staff. Now their program always was tied to credit-bearing classes at high levels, but also bringing in that international theme and providing some additional courses, especially around the foreign languages and those. Those still exist. But what has, um, kind of broken away is that we've, we've kind of lost our key communicators with NATO. And so we, we need to re-establish, you know, that communication backup. Because they have been in the past a very strong, uh, healthy partner for us. We've had to do some, you know, rebuilding with sister cities. We've done that this year. You know, that's, seems to be going pretty well. But there are other, some other partnership opportunities. And so that's an area that, that we felt like we wanted to be able to strengthen with that program. So really, we could go program by program by program and i- identify different components that will make them a stronger base program and really help differentiate that program as specialty. You go to the next bullet, you've got the Blair Pre-Medical Health and Engineering Program. Out of stu-, out of zone students are not provided transportation. I know you haven't heard this for the first time, but it still exists. We do not provide transportation for those out of zone, you know, uh, student population. It really, I don't think I have to say it, but it's an equity issue. And so, you know, that's a recommendation is provide transportation. Enough said there, I think. Last bullet on that page is a positive. We have three different middle school applications at the beginning, you know, of the year. It creates confusion. Parents that want to apply to more than one program have multiple applications to complete and it gets, it just gets confusing. Then when it goes into the counselors to provide that support and they're trying to figure out which schools, which applications go to, it made things, uh, difficult. We have created a common application. That common application is online or, you know, can be completed online. However, it does still have to be downloaded and then given to the school counselor to process. Our goal ultimately is to have a, a process where they can complete it online and submit it online. And that way you take out some of the, the middle men components. And so that has been a positive in that we've gotten to a common application. If you go to the next page, the last page, this is where we, the, we, we have a committee that's, we kind of refer to as our innovation committee. And that's more of the visionary pieces and, you know, what potential things that we could look at down the road. And so the first one is, there's not a district program leader to oversee and provide efficient support to all the specialty programs across the district. You do have the executive directors and we try to, you know, uh, really oversee these programs in addition to all of the other things going on. But as N- But as NPS has added programs, you know, ADL, STEM, and trying to enhance the programs we have, it, it, it sometimes gets to the side. Not intentionally, but it doesn't necessarily get all the focus that it needs to. And so we envisioned creating a district coordinator position to better monitor and support each program. If you go to the next one, it dovetails into it. The district application acceptance process is completed by each individual program and school. We have created a common evaluation rubric, which has helped. But however, you know, there's still the potential for unintended bias, and I emphasize unintended bias, and inconsistent application of each school's practice. If we had an application evaluation process that was centralized, whether it was by committee or, or using an outside vendor, which many divisions use, so that you've got a clear, consistent, unbiased process, we believe that would be healthy for our division. We're certainly not there yet, but that is something that we would potentially, you know, envision. And then, "The Norfolk community shows strong interest in unique programs that support student interests and strengths." You know, as we develop more programs, you know, one of the things that we've learned in our research is we really need to do a better job of engaging our community in the process in terms of what do students want, what do parents want for those student opportunities? You know, we've, we've tended to say, oh, this would be a great program over at this school geographically, or this may be a great program, you know, somewhere else. We, I think we did a really good job when, when we did the community engagement for creating, you know, the Academy for Discovery. And as a result, it, it seems to be going pretty well. But maybe we haven't done as good a job in, in some of the other places in terms of fully vetting what we wanted to do. You know, whether it's slowing down and making sure we have a, a good process, we just, you know, basically are making the recommendation based on research that we engage our students and our parents more than maybe we have. And I'll stop there for now.
You have more?
No. We, we, our goal today was to bring in some of the high-level recommendations and gaps identified that create some themes across the various specialty programs.
And I think it's a great update, Ms. Bassin and Ms. Doyle.
So I just lost my train of thought. But when, when you just mentioned that some programs may not be as desirable today as they were when they were originally planned, do you have any specific programs that were coming to mind or?
No, not so much undesirable programs or programs that we've created that are undesirable, because I think we have done that.
Yeah.
I think it's more of, you know, when we've, we create a program, what is the longer-term intent? We, we, there's been some perception that programs or a program has been created to solve a particular problem of the day and not necessarily what's in the best interest of students in the long term over that, you know, the course of, of time.
And I would say the other thing is, we've created some healthy competition among and between programs, but that has also hurt some programs.
Yeah.
So, you know, when Young Scholars was the only program that hired, that gifted students had to really access at the middle school level, interest was there, attendance, enrollment was higher. We have a number of, of middle school options now. And so parents don't necessarily select the young scholars. And so you, that was part of our recommendation to consolidate to one site again, you know, for this current school year. So those are some of the things, again, as we think about what the future of specialty programs look like, how we make sure we don't undercut our own strong programs by oversaturating the market, if you will.
Right. Okay.
So let's talk about the specialty programs at the high school level. What is the plan to accommodate students that might transfer into the division in 10th grade? Or, and they might do that because they're moving from City, Virginia Beach to Norfolk, or transfer military?
We have some recommendations for DLT, you know, at, at that, but we really don't have, we have an inconsistent process. Right now, we, we, we don't. But we've talked about a number of different things, including our military families in terms of, you know, when they come in and how we might be able to potentially hold some slots for that part of the process, which could include, you know, others as well, just from out of state. So, you know, we've had discussions around that. That's something that we really wanted to have a discussion with DLT on so that we would be consistent across the board in terms of what we would, you know, apply.
Would we deploy that solution next year?
I'm sorry?
Would we deploy the solution next year?
Potentially. Although, you know, right now, it would be something that we would have to make sure that we marketed, you know, that way. Because right now, parents, you know, we've said no to parents applying right now. And so we've gone through the application process, we've accepted the applications in, and we have told parents no at this point because that's what our current process is. However, we could open that door at any time the division decides that we want to open that door and then allow others to apply. The problem right now would be, we would have to have available slots, you know, if, if we were to open that door within the next current school year.
So I'd just encourage us to look at that strongly because we do have such an agile, flexible population that moves to and fro, that we need to help families that come here, 10th grade, who still want their child to access a specialty program?
Exactly. And, and we have been doing that, Dr. Birdsong and others. We have been doing that as it relates to the consideration around our military, you know, what we've been doing with the Interstate Compact. And, you know, that's one of the core principles of that, is how do we have some flexibility for trying out for athletic teams and specialty programs and all of that? So that's what we've been working on.
Well, and also, can we just hold the additional slots, like you said, so we can expand the bandwidth of the program? And it's not just military as much as it is, seriously, families moving from Virginia Beach to Norfolk.
Well, here's the challenge. You recall last time, some programs have waiting lists?
Yes.
And so we, one of the things we have to make sense out of is how do we hold slots when we have a waiting list? And what's the total capacity of the various programs? If it's an academy or a program within the school, or if it's a full school? Do you remember? That was one of the things we had with ADL. They kept wanting to expand, and I had to say no. And I said to the board last year, this is your fixed cap. It does not grow from there. And there are multiple reasons, multiplicity of reasons why. And so we have to figure out, how do we allow access for, for others when we have folks on our own waiting list? So that's what we're trying to navigate.
But just from my own.
Additional piece to that would be, because you're, you're speaking specifically to high school, is, you know, once you get, you know, to 10th grade and above, you're talking about course sequences.
Yeah.
You know, so you've got courses that build on one to another. And if a student is coming in and they haven't had those prerequisite courses, you know, we don't want to set kids up either.
Yeah, no, IB is IB everywhere presumably, so that's one example where you could enter at a different grade level.
That's an isolated one, because if we do have an IB slot and a student does come in IB from out of zone, you know, if we're able to accommodate, we do.
Okay. I just encourage us to look at that, to be flexible and agile and accommodating, because we do have a very movable population.
Yeah.
Dr. Robinson? I have a question, and then depending on the answer, I'll have a follow-up. Is our marketing of the specialty programs robust enough to, to fill those slots? You made the comment that's, at the middle school level, we may have so many programs that we're, we, we don't want to dilute the product by over saturation. Is it because we're not marketing enough, or we're not identifying enough?
No, no. What I was saying was that, for example, students who were identified gifted had a single opportunity. Now we have the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, we have the Academy of International Studies at Rosemont. You know, the list goes on to what are some middle school specialty options. And so parents, even additional K8, some may, may choose for that model. And so because of that, we find young scholars enrollment has been down. And we can look at students who receive the letter of invitation because they met the, the gifted criteria for invitation to young scholars. And not all of those who are eligible accept. And we can see where they are in some of the other programs. So that's what I'm saying. It's not about marketing. I mean, the marketing is strong. Participation in the district-wide events, so parents can see what's available and everything, is, it has really improved over the last several years. But the, the question becomes, which programs tend to be, with this year's group have an interest in a certain program, and what's our capacity there? We can't make the, the capacity fluid based on the number of applicants each year.
Do we shift, or do we inform parents of opening, say, they, they apply for, just pulling out ADL and, and, and Young Scholars? They, they get acceptance from both, they choose ADL, but we have a list, a waitlist at ADL. Do we tell those patient, patients? Do we tell those individuals, the families, that, that there's, there may be a spot at?
I'll let Mr. Coleman go back, because he addressed that at the mini-retreat, and he does it very well.
I missed that. I'm sorry.
So we have the same timetable for all of our programs, you know, in terms of offers and acceptances. So parents and students ultimately have to make a decision. So if they, if you use that example of ADL and, who else?
Young Scholars.
Young Scholars. If, if they make, you know, if they've been offered to both, the parent has the same deadline to make a choice. Once they make that choice, we, we, we have, we have them honor that choice.
Right.
So if they know that they're on a waitlist for one, they're on that waitlist, you know, they've come off.
I think you, maybe I didn't pose the question properly. Do you take somebody that's on the waitlist at ADL and then offer them a position at, at Young Scholars?
We only offer them a position in the programs that they applied for and that they sit, stand, sit on the waitlist for. But they have to make the decision, you know, at, because this is what Mr. Coleman talked about. We needed to have a fixed deadline by which parents make their acceptances because what we've been dealing with the last couple of summers, folks were dragging their feet into August. And then we had folks on the waitlist, and then parents know, I already made, decided my child's going to go here, and they don't shift. So we, once we have parents commit to the program that they have, then we open up those slots to, to kids who are on the waiting list.
Oh, that's, that was my question. The kids are on the waitlist. Are we offering those open spots at, at, say, Young Scholars, for example, to take the kids off the waitlist from ADL to fill up?
Only if that is the program that they, Young Scholars has special criteria first being identified gifted. So it's not an automatic, because you're on ADL's waitlist, that you're eligible for Young Scholars. That's why we'll see parents who apply for multiple programs to get to what you're saying. If they don't get into one, is there a possibility that they would get into others? And yes, where space is available.
We have not seen a case yet, to my knowledge, where a parent opted to be on a waitlist somewhere, giving up an offer somewhere else.
Well, I'm not saying to get up an offer. They didn't have the offer. They're, they're, they didn't get, they didn't get into ADL.
If they didn't express interest in that other program, then no, they're not.
Because that program may have a waitlist of students who already had that interest.
You just said that the, the Young Scholars is, is, the numbers are down. I'm trying to find more gifted students to put into Young Scholars.
Right. But remember, the pool of eligible gifted students receive those letters of invitation in 5th grade. Some parents choose to complete the application process for Young Scholars only. Some choose multiple middle school specialty, and some just choose their, their comprehensive middle school. And so there are a number of reasons of why folks don't go. But we have been able to document that there are a number of students who received that letter of invitation and opted to apply and attend another program.
We encourage students to apply to multiple programs so that they do have potential multiple options. But if they don't apply, you know, then they, they won't get on that waitlist.
But that's what counseling's all about.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We should counsel those families that there are other options. There should be no reason why we have numbers down in, in Young Scholars.
That does happen. And if you look at the majority of our applicants, the majority have applied to at least two or more programs.
Yeah. So that counseling is happening. You're, Mr. Coleman, say, we advise parents to apply for more than one program.
Dr. Gabriel?
It was, my question was already answered.
It's a whole queue. I'm getting around. Dr. Gabriel's done. Reverend Haywood?
Cheating.
Pardon me?
Did I cut in line? My question was already answered.
I'm just kidding.
Are you, do you have a question or a comment?
Oh, go ahead.
She, she's done.
I'm, I'm done.
You know, the, the junior ROTC program and Norfolk Public Schools is one that flies under the radar. But it is, is excellent program, and in particular at Norview, that program is, is not only one of the best in the states, but on the East Coast. And so when I've gone over and reviewed those programs, and, you know, they've taken me around and reviewed the troops and this kind of a thing, I've come to understand that there is a waitlist right there in the school for those programs, which have a, a 3.0 qualification. And yet they have a waitlist right there. So it occurred to me that the district could simply hire more teachers to address that issue that's there.
Well, JROTC staffing, though, is not solely driven by the district. That's driven by the military and how many sections of, via teachers, they will allow to happen. So that's not solely our control, but we do have JROTC in all five of our high schools. And so all students and, and the program, the curriculum is the same. And, but, but the, the military determines whether or not we're expanding or whether or not we lose.
Is that because they, they're helping to fund that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah. We did add, we worked with the Armed Forces, and we added a position at Norview two years ago, I believe. And when you talk about, you know, all five high schools have strong programs.
Yeah.
But Lake Taylor is where it's the specialty program. And there is a differentiated program there. But when it comes to, and it's, it certainly wasn't in this recommendation, but it is one of our recommendations, that is an area where we do need to do more from a marketing standpoint to be able to relate to students what those differences are. And so, you know, that would be another example of another recommendation.
But you have the largest number of students at Norview. Would that be correct?
You do, but it's also a larger school.
Right. Okay.
Ms. Bassin?
Okay. So several of the comments made spurred even more questions, so I have several. I'll just give you the heads up. So now back to, since Young Scholars was just brought up quite a bit. So we know as of right now that the enrollment, the applications are down. Is that what you're suggesting, or are you just talking about historically in the last?
Historically, they were down. They, there was a little bit of improvement this, going into this current school year. So the applications did go up a little. I wouldn't say it was significant or substantial, but it, it did go up. But even, you know, with those, the, the numbers going up, and I believe it was 61, you know, total applications that came in and 45 acceptances. So you know that that difference then, those students, as Dr., you know, Robinson was saying, they made other choices. You know, they may, I doubt if any of them were on a waitlist somewhere, but they made another choice for a different program.
Okay. So, okay. And so then all of our 5th graders, as you, as you, if I heard correctly, received a specific invitation to the Young Scholars program.
5th grade, identified gifted students.
Identified gifted students.
We sent it all across the board to every 5th grader, but with the gifted, we sent another specific one for identified, you know, gifted students as well.
For the identified gifted students. Okay. All right. I was just curious, curious about that. Because I think, you know, back to Dr. Robinson's earlier question about marketing, one thing that I have heard is that even where our internal marketing, that is to our current MPS students, we, we may be reaching them. But our external, I always get, well, why is it such a secret? Why are, why are our programs such a secret? So I think that might be an area where we could strengthen our marketing is, you know, reaching out to those, you know, to all families in Norfolk about our programs and doing more outreach in that, in that way.
We, you know, I couldn't include all the recommendations here, obviously, today. But we probably have as many as 10 to 12 different recommendations that came from our marketing committee specifically. I, I think I alluded at the retreat, you know, one of the things that we didn't tap into is our own students who have been in programs and using them as part of marketing. You know, so we, we've identified a number of different things above and beyond what we're already currently doing or how we can enhance what we're already doing as well.
Okay.
And this was intended to just be an update, because we had just spent, you know... And this was intended to just be an update, because we had just spent, you know, quite a bit of time at the retreat going deeper.
Right, right. And so, I'm not done. And then, I know at the retreat, we talked about, you know, the confusion around specialty choice and trying to come to a common, you know, calling them magnets. And that would include, you know, Southside STEM and ADL as part of that, correct?
That was a recommendation.
That was a recommendation that we have not brought back to the board yet.
Right, but I guess as part of the recommendation, it is part of this conversation, right?
It would eventually come back to the board as part of the conversation.
Okay. So, with that, we talked about the application process, but was there a discussion about the selection process and the potential of there being, you know, controlled choice?
Yeah, Mr. Coleman talked about that at the mini-retreat, where we said that once the applications go back to the schools, working on that rubric that everyone is using to evaluate and making sure that there's fidelity in the review process for all applications. I'll let Mr. Coleman add to that.
Well, that's exactly right. We wanted to have a common rubric. You know, still, one of the recommendations was, you know, to potentially centralize that, because even though you have a common rubric, you have multiple people applying that rubric. And so, they're still open for interpretation in some cases. But at least, you know, from a point standpoint, within that rubric, we now have X number of points for this category, X number of points for this category, and so on. And that is now common, where before, one school might have, you know, given 10 points for a teacher recommendation, another school might have given 25. Now, we're common.
Okay, all right, well, I'll refrain from...
Again, maybe it'll help if I, again, restate, we did not bring 100% of the recommendations to the board today. We wanted to bring some of the high-level ones to talk about some assets. We will continue to come back to the board with some of those recommendations that may not have cost implications, but have practice implications. And we can, we will continue through. I think Mr. Coleman said there are four or five different work groups within, six work groups within this task force. And so, each group, you heard him talk about marketing and media, you heard him talk about the application and selection. So, we'll be coming back to the board with those, but it was important for us to continue and to complete some of the work. But we committed to bringing a set of recommendations today, and those are the ones that we, but you'll be hearing from all of the work groups as we go forward.
So, we're going to, yeah, yeah, you had a question on your face.
Well, because I'm just, in terms of time element, if we're going to start implementation in September, do we?
Not everything is a fall of 18 implementation. Some of the practice pieces, we've already implemented, things that were shared, as Mr. Coleman did at the mini-retreat and again today, that there were places, the things we've done with the application, things we've done with a common rubric, scoring rubric, those are practices and things that, yes, they were recommendations, but those are practices we've already put in place. There are practices around improvements that we made with the open houses and that, that parents being able and students to see what's available in the district. So, we've already implemented a number of the recommendations. We weren't waiting to bring all of that to the board to begin that work. And so, what it looks like going forward and other enhancements, we continue to do. We put some things in place for this year's selection and all of that. There are other recommendations that we'll work from. We will be giving the board the full set of recommendations and being able to tell you just a full set of recommendations, but just as we had here, next steps, budget, or something said in progress. And so, we'll be able to use this as a baseline, and we'll continue to add to this in terms of recommendations and where we are in this process.
So, we're going to move forward and going to ask the board to yield back some time. We go into closed session, because we've been quite deliberate thus far, and we still have to get through this first part. So, next, we have School Board Policy Review, and Ms. Bassin, Reverend Haywood, I guess if you all would share with us the School Board Policy BCF that you have, that we have before us.
Okay, so, before you have BCF Advisory Committees to the School Board, and you'll see that the policy was updated so that we would have more flexibility, the board would have more flexibility in making appointments to the committees. So, you'll see that the specific committees, the names of the specific committees have been removed. Timeframes were removed as well. So, those are the, just of the changes that you see in front of you.
So, anyone have any questions on what's there as far as the update to the policy? Maybe additional updates to come later, but any questions at all? Because the plan would be, we're going to add this to tonight's agenda, because in existing policy, it required for certain things to be done by February. And by removing that, it gives more flexibility, and that's why we put this on the agenda today. And so, if there's no concerns about what's being recommended from the committee, we would put this on the agenda, consent agenda for tonight. All right.
Any questions?
Dr. Gabriel?
Would there be a regulation or a separate policy to be added into this to if we have a board member that's on there that potentially needs to be removed? Or if we needed to replace or refer someone?
Yeah, there's, under the...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's...
Yeah, under the tenure.
So, under tenure, so the regulations are being developed. And so, that will indicate, I think you mean, you mean committee members, I believe, right? So, if, so that'll be determined, you know, through those, through those regulations will indicate, you know, whether there's an X number, whether it be an X number of meetings that are missed, or whatever, that the committee is exploring that right now, and we'll come back to the board with a draft of the regulations. But yes, that, all that information will be...
And this also gives the flexibility, so whereas before, let's say someone had to leave and we had that time period in there, it caused us to have to wait, this gives flexibility that if there is a vacancy for it to be, be added upon.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
All right, so, thank you for that work, and we will add that to the consent agenda for the business meeting. Last item for now, coming out of the last work session, we had some conversation discussions around our School Board budget, also around some priorities for the board to ask the administration to consider. Coming out of the last meeting, we did have some consensus around trying to make sure on the professional development side that we were providing support for the board that will come into effect in the summer, and as well as our ongoing efforts of trying to make sure that we are being good financial stewards of the resources that we have, at least as, you know, as far as overall, but definitely as relates to our School Board budget. So, I just sent out to you all some considerations around that. I hadn't gotten any feedback on it, but I know it was, maybe it was yesterday, day before yesterday. But in terms of trying to make some adjustments in terms of professional development, board development, as well as trying to make sure that we are looking at other expenses within the School Board budget. You have that before you. Just open it up, if there are any comments, questions, additional concerns, something that Dr. Gabriel raised. We know as part of the, what our past practice has been related to conferences and professional development, we have listed those that tie to organizations where we are members, like Council of Great City Schools, National School Board Association, Virginia School Board Association, and so forth. But it's not intended to say that if there are not other professional development opportunities that board members feel would be helpful to our professional development, that this would deny that opportunity. So, Dr. Gabriel?
I really do appreciate all the suggestions that you had made regarding the budget. And I don't have a disagreement with any of them. I think that with new members of the board coming on, it will be important to incorporate the professional development and at least have the opportunity for them to attend the trainings. Whether or not everybody can attend, all of them is going to be, you know, depending on everyone's schedule. But having that opportunity there, I think, is important.
Yeah, and what's the budget for it?
I think we should budget for it. And the other question that I had, which was something that you had brought up in your recommendations, was the sponsorships that the board does. Will we be able to, is this in this, Ms. Banks? Okay. So, I would just like to know, do those sponsorships come out of the board's budget?
Yes, and there are sponsorships like to the MLK Breakfast, to the Regional Address, to the State of the City Address, those types of events.
What line item would they fall under then?
Purchasing and contracts.
Right, yeah, I pointed it out, and I was thinking that...
It is on page, it is on page one at the bottom, the very last line item.
Right, that we could get a listing of what's considered a sponsorship currently, and then the board, moving forward, could develop its own regulations, sort of criteria for what we consider a sponsorship, or if someone wanted to bring someone, something forward, what that process would be.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So, we know going forward, we're still going to have to spend a lot of time on the overall budget. But this at least was an attempt to try to provide to the administration where we were so they could factor in the School Board budget into the hundreds of millions of dollars that they have to deal with for the rest of the division. Ms. Bassin?
So, I support the recommendations that you had offered, but I had also sent a recommendation, and I believe it comes out of our budget, but about the legal services.
Yes, so the, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is all of our legal services in our School Board budget, or is that also?
No. What the intent was, I guess a few years ago, we were trying to provide the superintendent and the board flexibility to call in or to utilize additional counsel if needed. So, in your recommendation, where you were targeting to specific areas, we weren't trying to limit that. But we wanted to make sure that the flexibility was there, and we were trying to add to it over time so that ultimately, the superintendent would not find, or the board would not find, that their hands were tied. And then, if we needed additional outside counsel, that we were providing resources available to access. And that's why that's there in the budget.
So, my question then is around, you know, do we want to increase that specifically?
In the piece that's in my budget, control has been increased, and we can talk a little bit more about it when we present on May 7.
March, March 7.
March 7, I'm sorry.
You're skipping ahead like me, so we...
Started with an L, I was close.
So, it is in both?
So, it's noted, and we can talk about it as we go through our budget discussions, if we feel like it needs to be increased more. Anything else as far as the School Board budget? Okay, so, for now, that'll be our guiding approach pending upcoming discussions that we know we're going to have overall as far as the budget is concerned. Dr. Boone, if you want, we had received from, I had received from Dr. Boone a recommendation that we consider making some adjustments with the bus driver hourly rate increase. And this is an action that we would take that would have effect immediately. So, wanted to give Dr. Boone an opportunity to talk about that now. And we have it as a discussion item also in the business meeting, but wanted to give some opportunity for her to explain the rationale behind it and have some preliminary discussion if need be, and then we can have additional discussion at the business meeting if necessary as part of the action there. So, Dr. Boone?
As part of our ongoing review of staffing and recruitment and retention of staff, we have faced all year vacancies within our bus driver ranks. And as of today, we have 42 bus driver vacancies. One of the challenges, and you know, as you review the docket for the personnel docket, we often comment on what those salaries look like, and yet, these are the folks that see most of our children, the first MPS personnel that our students see first thing in the morning every day, and often the last MPS person they'll see when they are dropped off. Based on some analysis and reviews and being able to address vacancy savings due to those unfilled positions, as well as some restructuring that's occurring within transportation, again, in terms of how we manage, we're able to recommend to the board the increase in the hourly rate from $13.02 to $13.68, which would increase annual pay $725. And we would like to be able to do this as part of a retention initiative to make this effective March 1st, so that drivers know that the district has a commitment to them, and we want their training that they've received through Norfolk Public Schools to remain with us as we go forward into the next school year. What is the rate of the highest paid bus driver in the region? In the region, $13.97. And we're proposing? $13.68. March 7th, we'll talk more. I wonder if we even go there now, honestly? We can't go there now. We would love to go there now, but we can't. But we do have an additional recommendation on March 7th to get us closer to that. I would highly advocate for that, absolutely. Thank you.
That's the beginning salary?
That's the average, that's the average salary, right.
$13.97.
Yes, and that's the highest in the region. But we do have an additional recommendation in our FY '19 budget for bus drivers. But we felt this would go a long way at this point in the year to show our commitment to drivers, and those who may be considering leaving Norfolk know that, what we are planning to do. Ms. Ingram and I and Mr. Kleinbale, if the board approves this, we'll schedule a time that we can meet with drivers and talk about why we made this recommendation and hopefully why the board has supported it and share our commitment to them so that hopefully we can retain. So, why is it we can't go to the highest average right now? We have to be able to have the cash to do that. So, you've calculated this amount is something that we can do in this year's budget? Yes, this amount we can accomplish in this year's budget. And then, you're going to propose in March something likely higher with a proposed budget for next year? Yes. Okay, worth that.
Dr. Robinson?
I'm going to hold my question until later.
Okay, Ms. White, did you have? Anyone else?
Dr. Boone, I stand corrected, it's 1407.
1407 is the highest, so our...
We're getting there.
Proposal would get us to that by, in the next, close to that or near there in the next, where we compete on this side of the water.
So, is there any discomfort over the recommendation?
No, not at all.
So, then, we'll be, we'll vote on that in the business meeting. Because I'm confident that we're going to be focused in our closed session, there's one other thing that I've heard from board members I think we should take an opportunity to discuss now, Dr. Boone, and that's the, just an update on the ed specification, the ed work, the educational plan, what's it called? The MORI work, yes, the MORI work and...
I asked Dr. Rogers to come forward, but I'll set the stage. Come on up, Dr. Rogers. You will recall, the process that has been outlined as it relates to MORI High School is different from what we've done in a long time. The last time we actually engaged in educational specifications work like this is when the district built Norview High School 15 years ago. And so, part of this work is recommended. You will recall that we did some district work around what we felt the core of MORI High School would look like, you know, using MORI faculty, district personnel, and others. Then, we issued an RFP for groups to consider finishing this educational planning, which would then ultimately bring forth a set of recommendations to... which would then ultimately bring forth a set of recommendations to the board to vet in terms of what would be next steps, and what would be the recommendations for how we address the, the building at Norview High, Maury High School. So, Dr. Rogers is gonna talk about what the next steps are, and where we are in that process.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boone. Mr. Jordan, school board members, just to provide you with an update from the one that was provided, just seems like just last week. So, we've already had the initial planning meeting, that was, that took place on January 18th. Teacher interviews have been conducted with Maury staff members, and I believe they've had some conversation with some students as well. We had a planning meeting with EVMS, EVMS staff also on February 14th, to talk about what our next steps would be, and to bring them on board. It was a very productive meeting, to say the least. And we are in the midst of scheduling three off-site tours to three model schools within the state of Virginia. We haven't confirmed those yet, but it is our, it's in the works. The planning labs, which you might have seen, excuse me, the community meetings, which you may have seen the advertisement for, are coming up. March 1st will be the first one, and that's gonna be held at Maury High School between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:30 PM. There are three community meetings scheduled. During those meetings, we will have conversation with regards to what the purpose of the organization is, and the purpose of our doing the educational specification. We also have planning labs, full-day planning labs scheduled. The first one is going to begin on February 28th, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. We are in the process of sending invitations to approximately forty members who have been invited to participate on that planning team to discuss the vision and the mission of Maury High School as it relates to their programmatic needs, to help shape the course of that educational specification that should serve as a guide for the faculty and staff in the future, as well as whatever it is that comes as a recommendation for consideration to the school board.
Invites to members, defined members?
They're members of the community, they're members of parents, students, teachers, school, school board office staff, members of the business community.
That's a cross-section.
Can y'all hold the questions for a bit, I want, want them to finish, and then we can, we'll go to questions, so.
And much of the committee members who will be invited have already been a part of our educational planning team.
But, and we worked with the principal also to engage the Maury, current Maury student fa- family there, some Maury alumni. And so, we put it together as a very cross-section group, pretty standard practice when you're actually planning for what the, the education to occur in the building is, what's driving what building design, whether a, a major renovation would accomplish it, whether a replacement would accomplish it. And so, this is where we allow the program focus to, to drive this. We did the initial work, and I think I've shared with the board, around the medical health specialty being that core, and what are all the problems that come from it, at their specialty program, and what comes from it, in addition to the comprehensive piece. And so, that's why the value of the conversations with EVMS and that partnership, you know, we shared at the mini-retreat, some of our expansion challenges with the medical specialty program, was that the limitations of the lab at EVMS. So, is this something that this group would recommend to the board should be included in the design in order to meet the programmatic needs? So, this is the process that we've undertaken.
Are you finished, sir?
Yes.
All right, so, Ms. Basine, Dr. Robinson, Dr. Gabriel.
So, did you, if I heard correctly, so the members have not yet been invited?
No, they have not.
And this is a planning lab that's supposed to take place next Wednesday from eight to four?
And the rationale behind that is, we were held up with snow, and then the identification of vetting, who would actually be, we recognize that the initial meeting may not encompass everyone, but because there are three full-day planning labs, with the first one being primarily identifying what the purpose is to dispel myths that we're rezoning, and that kind of thing. So, because of timing, and because of the need to have this work done within the next five months, I believe it is, we know that the second meeting will have to be some replication, so that invitation to the committee members will share that. You know, if you're, if you're able to meet this one, that's fine, if not, then we will pick back up on the second meeting.
Well, I, I would implore us to really think about that, because it sets the tone to the community that we don't really, so, so even before, even though we may be expecting that people will not be there because of the short turnaround, it sets the tone that we don't really want your input, and therefore, aren't giving you enough time to-
Well, and we, we hope that's not the case. The principal has talked to some of the people to, to, to ask if they will be willing to serve, so some folks have been at least asked to serve verbally, their formal letter is what they have received.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, they've been given the heads up, because that's a huge chunk of time.
And I don't, I don't disagree with you at all.
Dr. Gabriel?
For the community meetings, is, are they going to be, are we going to be seeking input, or are we going to be delivering information?
Input, seeking input, so it'll be interactive. We've contracted with HBA as well as with cooperative.
Do you have thoughts on what that input?
Well, I will remind you, we aren't conducting these sessions, so, so let, let me put it in perspective. HBA was awarded the, the contract to conduct this educational specifications work. They facilitate all of these community conversations. We support it by making sure that the, the group is put together, and then they will go and facilitate, and they have a template that they described, and a process they described that allowed them to, to emerge as a successful bidder on this work. And so, their process will be the one that's utilized through these community conversations. And then, once they've finished the work, they will come to the board and assist us in presenting what their recommendations are.
I'm still confused as to, do we know what HBA is going to use as a template as to?
Yes, we do, that was part of the interview process, and what that looks like. What I'm hearing is a question, the board would like to see that, and we'll work with HBA to get either hard copies, or electronic, or a presentation before the board.
We have a-
We haven't said that yet, but you are hearing some interest.
I'm hearing that interest, let me say, if that's the board's desire.
There are three updates to the board scheduled, the first of which is scheduled for March 7th, so.
March 7th.
From HBA.
That's, I mean, that's after one of the first community meetings have already taken place.
So, if I'm hearing you correct.
But again, the contract was just awarded, what, four weeks ago? And we had to negotiate, I mean, well, they were selected, we had to negotiate the final contract. They even started on their timeline, and we had board meetings. If it's the board's desire, we will bring information back to the board around this process. But again, this is what the board, we knew that we were going to an outside entity to be able to conduct this next phase of the educational planning for that work, and so now, we're allowing them to do their work.
And-
Wait a minute, I, I see you, I got you, Dr. Robinson?
I'm a visual learner, could you repeat the dates? The first community meeting is March 1st, correct? Sure.
We'll send it out to you all, that we will-
Send it out to you, it's also in the presentation from your board retreat, but I have a copy, and I can make sure I get that to you. The, Dr. Boone, I forgot my copy, I'm really sorry.
No, no, that, that wasn't, that wasn't a slide that you should have brought, we just wanna remind you, we, we did provide it before.
Okay, I can, if it's in the, in that, I can find it then.
No, if you just share the dates again, please.
Absolutely. I didn't do a presentation, but I, I can't, so the dates for the planning labs are February 28th, March 28th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, those are the full day. April 26th, that's the third one. And then the community meetings are March 1st, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. April 12th, same time, 6:00 PM, 12:00 PM. And May 3rd. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I mean, seven thirty PM.
Six to seven, right?
May 3rd from 6:00 to 7:30.
Okay, it sounded like you said six to twelve, that's what I was-
How long he works, six AM to twelve AM.
Okay. And then, we have board updates scheduled for the board from HBA for March, at your March 7th meeting, which would be right after that first meeting, those first sets of meeting, and then May 2nd. And then the last one would be June 6th, where they would bring recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Basine?
I would agree with what I believe Dr. Gabriel is asking for, because, you know, we're, we're the link to the community, so if, if, I'd like to know what is being shared at that first meeting, just so that we're not blindsided by community feedback, you know, and questions about why we might be asking X, Y, or Z, or, or whatever it might be.
Yes, so let's, let's, let's touch on that just for a minute. So, you know, the board, we've had, I think through construction committee, through discussions here, we have recommended, moving forward with this process. And the, it's not a board-run, managed process that I think we, we agreed to. We know we need to get updates, but can you talk about what the expectation, the role of the board is in this process? Because I think we have to be careful that, yes, we need to get updates, but just like with the other task forces, it's not the role of the board to kind of micromanage that process?
I'm not, I'm not.
And ultimately, we want the consultants to be able to do their work in the community, and come back and give us recommendations. So, I think we need some clarity and some consensus around, what is it that we're asking the consultant team and administration to give the board to review, versus what we're making sure that the board is aware of? So, as we are, as we receive questions and comments, we know how to appropriately respond in terms of what the process is. But I think we have to be careful that we are not asking the community to come start giving comments to the board, and we have not had the benefit of the analysis and assessments and recommendations that will come from the consultant team. So, can you just, you know, Dr. Boone, Dr. Rogers, can you kind of speak to what that expectation is?
And the plan is to meet with them, I wouldn't say them, HBA and the consultant from Cooperative Strategies, to shape what those subsequent meetings will be, based on what happens at the previous meeting. So, in, in draft form, and we'll still solidify what takes place at that initial meeting, will be, of course, welcoming introductions, and then there'll be a brief presentation that helps to explain the why behind why we're even holding these series of meetings, and what the structure of those meetings will be, as well as the planning lab team and those community meetings, as well as some of the other things that we will do as a committee. For example, going out to visit exemplar schools to get ideas about what best practice is with regards to 21st century schools, or the modern-day school, as it relates to that specific program at Maury High School. We'll also talk about the EVMS meeting review, and the conversation that we had with EVMS staff, and imagining what Maury could be programmatically, as well as with the fiscal structure. Just how, no holds barred is, is one of the terms that may have been used with our initial conversation, if we didn't have restrictions with regards to time, space, and/or resources, but what we'd like Maury to look like from an instructional standpoint, or programmatic standpoint, as well as from a fiscal standpoint. There'll be small group discussions centered around a topic, topic which relates to what is successful, Maury High School could or should be, in their opinion. And they'll gather input from that, and that'll be a pretty brief discussion. And then, topic two, which is also a small group discussion, where we'll get input from those in the community. And we'll play around with the big driving question, but what modifications to the existing programmatic aspect and/or fiscal aspect might you suggest? So, again, it's reimagining conceptually from those who are in, in attendance. And then, lastly, we need to have some discussion to finalize this topic question. I'm looking at a draft, a question right here for the third topic, is what other academic or facility factors should we consider as we work on this plan together collectively as a community, as well as a team? And then there'll be a time for questions and answers, and we'll solicit input from those from there. So, it's pretty straightforward, generic for committee work, I think, in this initial concept with regards to establishing purpose and answering the question why, to dispel any myths that are surfacing from the community as to purpose and/or intent. And then we'll go from there and flesh out the dates, and share them with the community as well. But by all means, we can certainly share, you know, the agenda with the board, if it's your desire, you know, as we complete it and shape it together. One thing I will say is that HBA, as well as the partner from, her name is Carrie Ann Wolf, I'm not sure what she worked with the district in previous work, but she has been tremendous in terms of helping shape what this work looks like.
Any other?
No, I, I-
So, in terms of what, I guess you all are asking for, what is it that you're asking for specifically, or anything that we want to tee up for the March 7th work session? I mean, I'm just not clear on-
Well, and, and to be clear, I wasn't asking about just, you know, if there are certain objectives, that we know what they are, not, not so that we tell you what they should be. But just that we're, we, at least that's what I meant. I didn't mean to say that, assume that that's what, what you meant, but you might have meant something different.
People need to know what they're coming to the meeting for.
Well, I think that's the information that we give as we invite them to this work, and as the principal and others have talked with them about this work. When the public comes into, almost like a charette-type saying, they come in with the idea, hey, we're gonna facilitate your thinking around this. There's not a lot of pre-planning that goes on with a charette-type work, and so, that's what will happen in some of these community meetings. We're asking people to give, to help us think about what Maury's future could look like. And so, we aren't asking people to come in with research and do any prep work for those community meetings. It's very similar to the task force community meetings we had around what would be some boundary options for CTE schools. We asked folks to come in, they did a survey, they did discussions, they had that, and we took that and vetted that with, with, in, in terms of how we put together some recommendations to the board.
Well, I mean, I understand that, Dr. Boone, but what I'm saying is, are people coming, and this is very good information that you're sharing with us, because this needs to be shared with them. Am I coming to bring to you how I think we can enhance the program? I mean, it's not just gonna be the students that are already there, but it's gonna be, you know, folks coming up through the pipeline. Do we want, do we wanna preserve the pool? There are gonna be conversations about, do we-
That will emerge through the process, we are preempting that. We, that is, the definition of a charette-type process is that people come in with the, with the blank canvas, and they help us design that canvas. That's, that's, that's the goal of this, is to come in and help us take that blank canvas and create what Maury could be. And that's part of what Dr. Rogers said, that the consultants have said, think about it with no limitations, so we don't have land, monetary, any enrollment, we don't have any limitations, what would that look like? Obviously, that would be pared down and vetted appropriately to be the recommendations then, that the consultants will bring back to the board for that. So, we, we just, we want people to come in, see the blank canvas, help us put a design there for that canvas, and it's the programmatic piece, and what that looks like. Because, again, programs should design, should drive building design, building efficacy. And so, that's why we're starting with what the educational piece would look like. I won't say it out loud, because people have been sensitive about it, but that process didn't necessarily happen with PPEA.
So, and with the, what we asked the, when we put out the bit, we asked them to provide periodic updates to keep the board, as well as the community, informed with the progress of the meetings, to share what the ask is, you know.
Yeah, and honestly, I'm satisfied with your response now, because that's just all, just what the framework, what the framework is, not the, you know.
All right, any, any other questions on the actions, the program, the plan as relates to the, the Maury effort? So, and we'll, we'll get this update at our, at our work session.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, so, as we prepare to close out this session, just some takeaways I wanna put out there, and for others to comment, if- I want to put out there and for others to comment if, if I'm missing anything, or if I've added something I should not have added. So we've, uh, talked about, um, giving the administration some consensus, go ahead on, uh, looking at, uh, the CTE option with Booker T., plus a, um, ongoing strategic, uh, business planning process in collaboration with the city and our partners, um, continuing with the specialty work as has been, uh, presented to us today, uh, we'll have a update and timeline with the overall ed planning task force and what their scheduled meeting and activities will be, uh, continuing to move forward, uh, with the CTE governing committee and the process for getting that structured and appointed and getting them active. And then, um, oh, April updates associated with the CTE and ed planning, we know that the administration is still coming back to us with April updates that touch on a whole variety of things associated with the, uh, the ed planning. And then, uh, we just received the, uh, update on, uh, the ed specification activities at Maury, and we'll have a work session update in March as it is related to that. So anything that, that I'm missing or added that? And we didn't get a chance at this work session, but I know at the business meeting, we'll also get an opportunity to talk about, um, uh, security and, uh, issues that we know have been going on in the community and in Norfolk Public Schools as it relates to, uh, a variety of activities. And so we'll, we'll get an opportunity to discuss that at the, at the business meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Bassin?
And are you requesting to, any additions for consideration for the-
I'm just looking for, did I miss any takeaways from this, from this session?
From today? Okay, no.
No? Good?
Capture.
All right, so, uh, it's, uh, four fifty-two, if we can, uh, take ten minutes and, uh, after we take this motion for the closed session, if we can convene at five oh-five, and, uh, so we can get done with our closed session in time for our business meeting, uh, do have a motion for us to enter into closed session.
And make a motion that we enter into closed session?
Have a second.
A second?
Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Ms. Bean, Ms. Bassin, uh, Ms. Banks, I was gonna say Banks, if you would, uh, read the motion, please.
It's been moved that the members of the school board, the superintendent, and council go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in section A of section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for the discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools, including consideration of the personnel docket of this date pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section, for the discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section, including their people personnel docket of this date, and for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The substance of this section of the motion refers to the advice of counsel regarding one, the matter set out in subsections A and B of this motion, and two, the school board's legal relation to the Norfolk Education Foundation. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye, so if there are any refreshments, we can get them and be ready to roll and, okay, about ten minutes, uh, we'll get started. Thanks.